I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order. It's Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022 at 7:01 PM. And we have Board Member Maya Rabasa, Alicia Hayes, Gordon Leifer, Martina Shabram, Laurel O'Rourke, and present on the video Judy Newman, Chair myself. And we'll be introducing the students later. And Mary Walston just joined us. Great. We're all here virtually. And welcome everyone tonight. So please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic which stands one nation
under God
indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 through 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from Western Oregon, some of the Kalapulia were moved to the Grand Ronde Reservation, and some were moved to the Salletz Reservation. It's important to note that all of Lane County was an important trading and gathering area for camas and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederate tribes of Kuest, Lower Amquah, and Sayusla, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ronde Indians, the Confederate tribes of Salletz Indians, and the Coquill Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Amquah Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Thank you. Are there any, we're going to look at the agenda. Has anyone had a chance to review it? And are there any questions or changes or corrections to the agenda? Don't see any hands up, so there are none. So all right, the agenda stands as it is. Now I'm going to ask the superintendent to make her comments and introduce our guest, Superintendent Vanderkar.
I am going to begin with just the biggest honor tonight, I think, for me. And it is to welcome our student board reps. So we've, we've met you, but I don't know that the community has met you yet. So if you don't have your screen on when I read your name, you can turn it on. And then, once I introduce you after that, we will do an oath of office for you. So it'll probably be messy on Zoom, but we're going to do it anyway. So joining us tonight from Churchill, we have Yossi Lee. And I think, you want to go by Yo-Yo? Yes, or no?
I'm sure, yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, so it's either one?
Yeah, either one works.
Okay. And then from North Eugene High School, we have Taryn. From South Eugene High School, we have Noah. And from Sheldon High School, we have Johanna. And from International High School, we have Violet. And we don't yet have someone from Echo, but I believe we're working on it. So here's what you do, students. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. So I know that the mic will only pick up some of, you know, here and there, but it'll, it'll get us, I think. Repeat after me. I, and then say your name.
I, Johanna.
Will support the Constitution.
Will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of Eugene School District 4J.
And the policies of Eugene School District 4J.
And will discharge the duties of student board representative.
And will discharge the duties of student board representative.
To the Eugene School District Board to the best of my ability.
To the Eugene School District Board to the best of my ability.
Welcome to our newly sworn in 2021, 2022 student board reps. And I look forward to hearing your reports just a little bit later on the agenda. Then I have some prepared notes. And then after that, we have awards that we'll hear about from our music competition. And those are coming next. So, good evening, Board Chair and Board Members. To begin my comments, I want to, I want to give a huge shout out to Brandy Wormdoll. She, she was a high school athlete. She was a college athlete, and she's been a longtime coach at North Eugene High School. I honor her for her ongoing fight to make sure that women's sports receive equal opportunity compared with the men's sports at our schools. That includes financial support, time on the field or the court, that which includes what time you're on the field or the court, locker room access, and what your locker room looks like, and so much more. Brandy joins many other role models who have not settled for just some progress, but pushed for equity across the system. Today, Brandy invited Assistant Superintendent Brooke Wagner and me to walk 5K, which is 3.1 miles, which also is 12 and a half laps around the track with her PE class to celebrate the 50th year anniversary of Title IX. Now, Title IX isn't only about women's sports or men and women's sports equality, but it is about equality across the system. So any, here, I'm just going to read it, just so I don't mess it up. How about that? Any, and I'm not going to read it because I had it in my hand, and now I don't. And any school, anybody who receives federal dollars has to follow Title IX. And what I found over time is that we don't do it often very well. And it's a constant reminder to our facilities, to our, maybe our community, that we're supposed to represent all people, not just female, not just the gender, but all people the same across the system. And so I just want to say a big thank you. We got, we got lapped a couple of times. And it took us 52 minutes to finish it, which was shorter than the period. So no one was tardy getting back in. But I just want to say thank you for inviting us and for selling me a t-shirt that says, "North Eugene High School." And I just feel like we've got to keep pushing forward. And that it's, it's just not a finished deal. Like, it's been around for 50 years, and it has gotten better, but we're still working on it. I wanted to tell the board and the student reps that we will have track and field at the middle schools. It will be on a modified schedule to support our bus systems. And more information will go out to families and middle school staff and coaches. But that has been a decision made by our athletic director, our district athletic director, and members in the district office that support all the pieces that go into making track happen. At the Budget Committee, we had a number of questions about how our year-end balance was figured out. And I, I want to say publicly that it occurred to me after so many questions that it wasn't clear in our presentation that what we showed at the meeting was in the moment. So, so in the moment, we carry forward, for example, what we're paying teachers right now. So since we haven't settled the contract, we don't have any new ongoing costs figured in. We also didn't know what the estimate for the roof to replace at Kelly was, and we didn't have that in there. So there's a number of pieces because of the timing of the report and when we have to give it that weren't included in there. So we'll do another job of getting that information back to the board and the community so that people are aware where what we think really is a closer estimate to what we have left in the reserves. When I met with Communities Against Hate this, this week, they reminded me that kids at North, parents at North, staff at North, all the people that make up North Eugene High School, and anyone who is friends with people that have been affected by what happened in December, need an update. So even if the update is that Instagram has not responded because we're in the queue, but we haven't made it to the front of the line yet, Instagram has not responded with the owner of the account that made the threat. So we've asked for it, and we call every Monday to see where we are and see if there's an answer. And we'll keep calling. And so what I'm going to do is just let the principal know. And as soon as we hear something, we'll let you know, but I will let you know that we keep checking in. So until there's an answer, I will let you know. And that is just a suggestion from the Communities of Hate team that I meet with every three weeks. And that even though I make the assumption that you think that we're still working on it, you don't know that because you're not here listening to me get the, the report that they still haven't responded. So we'll keep that going. And Taryn, if you want to go back and tell everyone that we call weekly and we get the same answer, but eventually we're going to get an answer. So you can pass that along if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yes, so, let's see. I am ready to, oh, we will hear about graduation rates today. And we have some, some trends that show that we are improving with our graduation rates. We do have a couple of affinity groups that dropped. And I know that Oscar Loubrero, who does all of the stats for us, is searching to figure out what happened. And we do follow an anomaly year in, not last year, but the year before. So 2020, where kids were given the, the grace that if they looked like they might pass at the beginning of the term, that they were given a passing grade just because of how hard it was to flip to CDL. And, and they'll talk about that, but I just wanted enough time to think about questions that might come up. So comparing to last year is probably not our best comparison. We should try to compare probably to the year before. Even when we compare to the year before, it, it will show a drop in a couple of our groups. And we are looking into why that happened when we were on a steady increase for some groups and not others. So know that as a priority, and I would love, love it if we could answer questions during the time when they present. So now I would like to turn it over the mic. And is Shira here?
I'm here.
Yay. So Shira Fadeley is the TOSA, the Teacher on Special Assignment for Music. And she has some very good news to share with us. And I'm going to turn it over to you, and I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that from you as well, Superintendent. Musical greetings to the board and the wider community. As Superintendent Vanderkar said, I am Shira Fadeley, and I am the Teacher on Special Assignment, coordinating K-12 music for the Eugene 4J School District. We have some students we're about to honor, and we're not completely able to find them among the attendees unless their name is the full name that we're expecting. So students, if you're there as attendees and you can change your name to your first and last name, it'll make it easier for us to pull you up so that we can see you when, when I read your name. My joy-filled purpose is to share some of our recent students' success in music by recognizing individuals who auditioned and were chosen to serve in performing honor groups during the 2021-22 school year. These are student opportunities that are slowly returning after hiatus due to COVID. Not every student could attend this evening, but I'll ask the ones that are here, if we can get you on Zoom, give a wave when your name is called, please. In November, the Western International Band Clinic, or WIBIC, took place near Seattle. Students from the Western United States came together to work hands-on with well-known contemporary composers and conductors. We had four students participate in WIBIC honor groups. They are Carissa McMahon, trumpet, Sidney Mercer, flute, Emily Mitchell, flute, and Michael Reed, euphonium. They are students of Julie Bowns at Sheldon High School. Love those happy fingers. Thank you, everybody. A couple of weeks ago, here in Eugene, the Oregon Music Educators Association held its annual statewide conference. It's a three-day event filled with clinics, panels, performances, and keynotes from nationally recognized music leaders. The conference culminates with the performance of the All-State Honor Groups, who have been rehearsing together over the course of the event. These are also chosen by addition from students all over the state. Selected this year to perform in the All-State Jazz Band on the baritone saxophone was Kathleen DeCosta. There she is. She is a student of Kim Melby at South Eugene High School. Selected this year to perform in the All-State Mixed Choir from 4J were Carissa McMahon, second soprano, Harper Wheeler, second soprano, and Megan Mapunga. They are students of Megan Purdue at Sheldon High School. Selected this year to perform in the All-State Wind Ensemble were Kwan Kim and Catherine Wischnowski. They both play clarinet, and are students of Kim Melby at South Eugene High School. Selected for the 2022 Middle School All-State Orchestra were Pearl Carter, cello, Oliver Quelo, string bass. I see you, Pearl. There you go. John Harms, cello, Kyla Hurt, cello, Ava Kovacevic, violin, Asher Lewis, violin, and Kepri Sroika, violin. They are students of Karen Durford at Roosevelt Middle School. Performing this year in the All-State Symphony Orchestra at the high school level were Daniel Huang, viola, Kalen Lee, cello, Morgan Osborne, violin, Alyssa Soroka, Alyssian Soroka, violin. They are students of Karen Durford at South Eugene High School. And our final recognition this evening is for a student performing in the national level at an honor choir, which is part of the Honors Performance Series at Carnegie Hall in New York City. This student is soprano Alex Stringer. They sing in the Sheldon High School Choral Program that is led by Megan Purdue. I conclude with one last gargantuan shout-out to these students for working hard to make beautiful music at an advanced level and for taking on the rigorous requirements of being honor group members. Thanks also to their supportive families and teachers who helped them be successful. Congratulations, everyone.
So before you go off-screen, as Board Chair, I just wanted to jump in and also send my congratulations to you wonderful young student musicians. I really, really appreciate it. When I was signing the certificates this week, I had a huge smile on my face because it is just wonderful. We've really missed seeing students. I bet you've missed being able to perform and compete. So I'm so grateful to you, to your teachers, to your parents, and thank you for making our night.
Thank you again, Shira, for being here, and all the kids and families. I love it that some of the parents are back there rooting you on in the picture. That was a nice touch, too. So I don't know where she was, but she couldn't be here. So thank you to everyone that made it happen. I can see teachers and the attendees, and I just want to say thank you. I know how much time goes into this and the weekends, and really a lot of practice that was described by the Board Chair. So again, thank you and congratulations, and I wish you best of luck.
So will you finish, Superintendent Vanderkar?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Then I think the next thing on the agenda are comments from the Board Chair, and that's me. So yesterday, February 1st, 2022, was the Chinese New Year, which is a festival that celebrates the beginning of a new year on their traditional lunar-solar calendar. It is celebrated around the world in Chinese and other East and Southeast Asian cultures and by people in our own community. On the evening before the New Year's Day, many families follow the tradition of thoroughly cleaning their house in order to sweep away any ill fortune and to make way, make way for incoming good luck. This tradition of symbolically sweeping away negative feelings and unhealthy stress and making a space to welcome positive change and growth really resonated with me at this moment in time, and it's a practice I'm embracing this year. I'm committed to cleaning my house of any words and deeds that cause others harm and make more space for learning and growth and grace so my commitment and passion for providing an environment where every student is safe and secure and can benefit from a high-quality public education can actually be realized. As we are all aware, this year has been a very challenging for our board as we struggle to figure out how to work together as a new group of seven individuals. We have some very welcome new voices on the board, as well as some very experienced voices. I'm committed to making sure that all of these voices are welcomed and carefully considered. And I'm committed to ensuring that every board member is treated with the respect they deserve. As Board Chair, I've been very focused on finding pathways and resources to help us move forward as a board to heal and to work together to harness our many talents and passions. I'm convinced that this will take a variety of supports and methods, and I'll share what these might be. We have a lot more conversation to do about them. But I think, first of all, we do need some nuts and bolts training on board roles and responsibilities and rules of engagement. I've been working with the Oregon School Board Association to set up a training with one of their trainers who's going to partner with the Chair of the OSBA Caucus of Color. I think we would benefit from working with a skilled and mute, I also think we will benefit from working with a skilled mutually agreed-upon mediator who meets with board members individually and then brings us together as a group with a guided way forward in communication. And I think we could benefit from a series of trainings and/or study on anti-racism focused in education so we can identify policies and structures that may need to change, curriculum that needs to be improved, and any other, any other areas that the board has influence in. We've really recently taken one important step to better communicate as a group by completing our discussions related to each item of our board working agreements. I want to thank my fellow board members for their engagement in this process, and I believe it deepened our understanding of each other. As I symbolically clean up my house of things I don't want, I'm creating the space for healthy debate and learning where we can work together as a group of seven individuals to make decisions that are the best interest of students and our 4J community. And before I close, I want to express my gratitude to a few, for a few more things. First of all, I want to thank our community for taking the time to share your thoughts and what 4J needs and values in the superintendent. We got over 3,400 responses to the survey we had out, and 900 of those responses were from students. We had many people attend the six community forums and the additional student and staff meetings. So we are looking forward to hearing all of that information compiled next week. And I want to acknowledge the incredible stress and workload our 4J staff continues to carry each and every day. Navigating multiple challenges over two years has really taken a toll. I don't know the best words to express my appreciation and respect to you. Without your work and dedication, our students would not have a chance to learn and be supported. So I sincerely thank you. So I feel like the next item on our agenda deserves a drumroll and a huge welcome because it's going to be reports from our student, our student board members. And I just want to really personally welcome you to this meeting and tell you we've really missed your voices, and I'm glad you're here. And I think you had an orientation with several of our board members, so you know you get time to speak and give a report. And we welcome you to stay for the entire meeting. If you would like, you would be participating in any, any of our discussions. But we also understand as students, you probably have homework and other activities. So whatever works for you, feel free to do. So I'm going to just call in you in the order I have on here. I hope that's okay. So the first board member is from Churchill, and that's Hostelina Godinez.
Oh, it's Yossi Lee Godinez.
Thank you very much. Hostelina Godinez. Thank you. Your turn.
I'm Yossi Lee. I'm from Churchill High School. I just have a little report. It's my paper next to me, so I'm going to be like looking at my side here. I think the biggest thing that I have to start off with is the COVID concerns. I feel like faculty aren't enforcing it enough when students have flu-like symptoms or not enforcing masks in class, especially because I know personally, some of my classes are pretty packed with students. But, yeah, I think that's like, just with that COVID concern. And then a big thing I'm also noticing is that a lot of affinity groups and students of color are feeling supported from faculty at my school either. And it's starting to, it's starting to not feel super great, just from me personally. But yeah, and then just a little update. We have like a unified basketball team that the Life Skills Class is doing, where they're unifying students from that class and the students from like regular, like day-to-day classes, too. It's going to be like a basketball team, and they're having like a big basketball night. It's pretty fun. And then for like Black History Month, our Equity Team is doing stuff for that, like the teacher, Mr. Chisholm, I don't know if you guys know Mr. Chisholm or not, but he's super great, and he's been working on that with BSU. And then mental health is a pretty big thing right now. Personally, I have been struggling a little bit with school, especially with like our seniors and juniors, just like needing to figure out what we're doing after high school and figure all that stuff out. But even for underclassmen, like it's a lot to come back from doing nothing to doing everything. And I feel like some teachers should have a little bit more leeway with that. So that's been a little stressful. Um, I think that's it from my end of things, at least.
Thank you very much. Taryn from North is next.
Hello. So I wanted to start this off by saying thank you guys for recognizing that there are issues of racism that are going on within our school because it has felt like no one has been talking about it. So, yeah, thank you for addressing that. But it also seems like the support from our school is mostly coming from our teachers of color and our affinity group leaders. And there's not a lot of support from like, like visual support from superintendents and faculty above, I believe. And so just maybe some more transparency between that. And then also, as Yossi Lee said, mental health, I think, is incredibly important to be addressing that. And just mental health resources, that we need more resources. And just like coming in. Hold on. Sorry, someone's moving around. We need more like mental health resources within our schools and talking about the recent events that have happened and just like addressing that and how it conflicts with our mental health. And then also I want input on like how we can make our schools feel safer. And if this has happened... And if this has happened in the past, how had, how have we combated it and how have we done things to move forward? And then I also got my friends wanted to enforce climate education within all the grades and like climate education. We learned about it earlier within school so we can learn actions as to how to move forward with that. And then also Cindy, Sydney, I think you were talking about possible critical race theory or that might have been Judy, someone was talking about enforcing more like talking about less hate and combating that. And so I'm just wondering if we're teaching critical race theory within our schools and just more on that. And then also like teaching the importance of recognizing white privilege and how we, what we have as students and then as individuals. And then also the packaging on our school food and then the unnecessary amount of food waste that has happened. Because like when I go up and I don't want carrots or I don't want an apple with my food, I have to like throw it away or I have to, I, there's no place to like give back. And so I'm just wondering if we have more resources and availability to give back to our community. Yeah, so I think that's what I've got for now.
Great. Thank you, Taryn. Noah.
Hello, my name is Noah and I'm the representative for South Eugene High School. I'm going to report on a few different events that are happening at South that student government has been working on as well as some concerns that have been present at South recently. A few things that we have that are sort of exciting that are happening is that we're going to start having talent shows once a week at lunch so that students can perform for each other. We've also had intramural volleyball happening at South, which has been, the turnout has been great for that and people have really been coming together to play together once a week at lunch. And then two weeks ago, student government put together a human rights and community involvement assembly that was recorded and presented during a Friday advisory. And there were speakers brought in from different resources and groups around the community just so that students could form a better connection with different mental health resources or sexuality resources in the community so that students would learn not only how to engage with these resources, but just know where they were. And our biggest goal going into this upcoming midterm rest of the year is that we really want to be able to involve clubs and student unions in the planning of different events, just because we've also noticed that it feels like there's often a disconnect between the club and the different things that are happening at South. We just want to make sure that all the clubs feel like they have a place and a way to plan their own events. And similarly, the feminist union and Economic Justice League right now are having a hygiene drive and all of the donations from that are going to South students. There's been a concern recently about the gender neutral bathrooms at South because due to misuse, a lot of the time they are locked, which obviously defeats the point of having gender neutral bathrooms. And so the GSA is trying to convert some of the gender-specific bathrooms into gender-neutral bathrooms in order to improve accessibility since it's when they're locked or because of misuse, obviously, but still it just is hard for students who need them to have access to them when they need them. And also I've been noticing similar concerns due to mental health. And while it does feel like there are resources at South that students have access to, I don't think that a lot of students take advantage of those resources. So I think it would be important to start bringing things more directly into the classroom so that students aren't, don't really have to go out of their way in order to access mental health resources, but they're really brought to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah. We have Johanna from Sheldon.
Yes, hello. Thank you so much for having me. Again, I'm Johanna Gilbert and I am the student board rep from Sheldon High School. I apologize if you can hear piano in the background. My sister is practicing. I don't know if that's just me or if you guys can hear it too, but that's what's going on there. But so some updates on events. The Mr. Miss Irish pageant has started and they are going full swing. They've gotten their donation jars out to local businesses and their letters out. They're practicing for the pageant. So that is super cool to see that up and running again. It wasn't around last year and it was, it was really missed. In terms of ASB, we recently had a very successful club fair. We had had similar difficulties in connecting ASB with the clubs and affinity groups. And we got to have a really cool club fair where we had an adjusted schedule and all of the clubs had tables out in the courtyard so that it could be COVID-safe. And we did rotations of, of classes, of fourth grade classes that got to go to the club fair. And that was just hugely successful, got lots of students plugged into clubs where it had previously been pretty difficult to get students plugged in and informed about those clubs. So that was really awesome. Additionally, this was back in December, but it's still relevant. We had a fundraiser called Snowflakes for Joy that we always do that NHS and ASB both participated in and at first the fundraiser was really rocky. We, and then it got to the last week and we only had like a fifth of our goal. And then we ended up, which I think our goal was six thousand dollars, which this fundraiser is raising money to give to low-income families in the, in the Sheldon area, schools that, Sheldon and schools that branch into Sheldon to give them gift cards for Christmas. And we ended up pulling in like a thousand dollars over our goal in one week because everyone really just worked together and that was super cool. So that was just an encouraging note on the community front, which is something we all need right now because it does feel difficult. Additionally, coming up, we are going to have a senior breakfast for Valentine's Day to kind of get seniors reconnected with people they haven't been in school with for two years. And being senior year, it's, it's, we have definitely found that it's been difficult to kind of adjust back to high school having had that kind of independence. And also looking forward, knowing that in a few months we're going to be independent again. So that is cool. Additionally, we're working on, since we can't have assemblies where the whole school is together in person, we are putting together an assembly in a box and we have really cool Sheldon t-shirts made that we're going to, we're going to send out. So ASB is working on that. Additionally, we have started sources of strength at our school, which has been just hugely encouraging to students that that is now a class and from what I've heard, it's going really well. So that's wonderful. Additionally, we in response to the racism struggles that we have had, we did a campaign of pictures where we had students volunteer to be in pictures, holding signs that represented unity and acceptance of people of all races and backgrounds, which was really cool. But on that note, does not solve the problem. And I definitely agree with the other reps that there needs to be more education in that field. I think we have maybe, we have an African-American lit class. And I know we have a class that teaches some critical race theory. But those are the only two classes that I have, I've heard of and that I think accumulates to three class periods over the whole term. So that's, or three class periods available per term. So that's not access to a ton of students. So I definitely think on that note, like improving curriculum on that. I'm sorry that this is so long-winded. I have my list kept building up. Also, for Black History Month, we, ASB has done a campaign where we have had each class of ASB claim a hallway and we're putting up posters to represent different artists and writers and leaders and athletes from the African-American community and also some world leaders and world athletes. So that is really cool. All right, for the things that need adjustment and, and help. We have felt really strongly that we don't have enough access to in-person health resources kind of period at our school. I think that we have a nurse that comes by once a week for a few hours, but I don't think I've met a single student who's ever seen the school nurse. And that to me is a big issue. I know a lot of students don't have access, great access to healthcare, whether that's physical healthcare or mental healthcare. And it's, it's been really strongly felt amongst our student body that we need to have people, not just information about resources that are out there in the community for us to go find ourselves, but really people on campus who are equipped to help students with physical and mental health issues in the form of a nurse or a psychiatrist, whatever that looks like. I don't know how that would happen, but I know it used to be that way. There used to be those kinds of people on campus years and years ago, from what I've heard from teachers. Now, don't, don't quote me on that, but students have really felt that that is lacking. Additionally, like in terms of support for seniors and encouragement for future planning, at least at Sheldon, that was pretty absent this year. A lot of, a lot of seniors, I don't know if this is because last year was so weird or what, but a lot of seniors felt like they were completely on their own to figure out how to plan for the next year of their life. And I think it's really important that we equip seniors with the information and skills that they need to start building their life after high school, whether that's college or that is working or going to trade school, whatever that may be. Students were given very little information and resources this year. So I think that's something that could definitely be improved is like encouraging our seniors in future planning and really giving them good information. So yes, and then finally, the issue of IEPs and 504 plans. A lot of students, I think it's more on the 504 plan side. Students who have 504s for depression, anxiety, that kind of thing, ADHD, all of those things, which has greatly increased. Don't feel that their, their 504s are being honored by their teachers on, on a large, on a large scale. And I think some of that is the system through which it is communicated. And so I don't have a solution for that, but I definitely know that students have felt like their IEPs and 504s have not been given the attention that they should be and they have not been provided with the appropriate accommodations.
Thank you. That was, that was a big report. You did your homework. The last student to report is Violet from IHS International High School.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm Violet. I'm, I go into international high school and I'm also a student at Churchill High School. That's my home school. So I'm just going to start off with some general updates. There's not that many, but we're currently getting ready to launch our new like international high school merchandise that every single school year, we have basically like a contest where we have all of our students create their own designs and then we sort of like vote on it and devote on colors and stuff. So we have some really cool merch coming out that it's all student designed, which is really cool. We have some really good stuff this year. You all should check it out. And also we have, every year we have a select group of seniors, me included, who are working on beginning this year's planning of our American Youth for Sexuality Education plan for this year for our ninth graders for the health curriculum. So it's just peer education, which is really exciting. We're going to get some juniors involved. So it's like a great community thing we do every year. So that's starting, which is fun. And then I just have some concerns that I wanted to bring to this board that I've been talking with students about for the past month or so and just wanted to bring that to all today. Starting off, I just wanted to echo what Yo-Yo was talking about earlier about concerns over like student health. Like policies and things that are being implemented within our schools and basically what's being let, like allowed within schools, including like who's eligible for what or what quarantines are being observed. There's just been some concerns from students and teachers I've spoken to about that. So I thought that was just an important thing to note. And then I wanted to touch on some questions basically about like funding within schools, especially in terms of ASB, because I know there's been concerns from multiple people about the fact that ASB funds a lot of times are like allotted to very specific things like dances or things like that. And I know there's been ASB students and groups who have expressed wanting to use that for other things than what is like determined by the district or the school specifically as what they're allowed to do with it, like supporting student unions or other groups within that. So I know there's students who have questions about that. So I would be interested to hear about that. So I can maybe like give that information to them in turn. And then basically the biggest thing I want to talk about today is concerns over a lack of support for black students during Black History Month at all of the host schools we have here and the active work schools and staff are working to do rather than just take some more performative actions like, just like showing facts, making posters or things like that and actually working to engage with and listen to black students. I talked to some students and I do some quotes I'd like to share with you all. But I had a student state with me, I'll start the quote now, and who said, "A lack of support even within, there's a lack of support even within staff and it makes it harder to support underrepresented students when our staff can't even step up and support the marginalized students simply because they don't feel a personal relation to them." It's the end of the quote. So there's just been concerns from, from black students and students of color specifically about this lack of support they feel from teachers who do not share their racial background, their ethnic background, and it's very apparent. And these concerns are popping up even now when we've, there's sort of like this show within the school of posters and things for Black History Month. And I did have a black student leader within the four J community who stated and allowed me to include this quote and they asked me to and I'll start the quote now. It said, "I'm scared to be direct about who isn't doing what and who is blatantly lacking in supporting marginalized students because of the risk to my own safety and the prospect of being targeted." It's the end of the quote. There's definitely safety concerns that students are feeling every single day, especially with these, these, these racist occurrences happening within all of our schools. It is felt throughout the district. And just because like one large incident isn't happening specifically within international high school or Churchill or anything like that, these occurrences do happen and do affect these students throughout. And I don't fully believe proper care is being given to these students, especially black students, especially during Black History Month, which we should be honoring and working to support them as best as we can. And I don't believe, and other students I believe can echo this, that it is students' jobs to always advocate for themselves, especially when they are living a marginalized identity and have to deal with this every day. So I just want to share that with you all. And then just the last thing I wanted to include is basically echoing what Johanna said earlier. I did have some students come to me talking about wondering about 504 plans and IEPs and the fact that they were wondering sort of about the structure and trainings that are given to teachers or anything about that or what information is given to them because they've had specific occurrences within the last couple of months of having a 504 plan or something like that. And teachers basically saying that they didn't understand their plan, so they didn't want to do it and having to advocate for themselves continuously and getting their parents involved even after these plans were already set up. So that's just definitely a concern because there isn't really a justifiable excuse for just saying that you don't understand it. So you don't want to do it when these are like legal things that these, these teachers and staff members need to be following. And it's important that these students are not left to have to advocate for themselves again because our school system isn't holding our staff accountable in their support. Yeah, that's all I had to say.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, appreciate hearing from you all. And I'm going to move on now to items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@fourj.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at fourj.lane.edu/board-public-comment. At fourj.lane.edu/board-public-comment. Or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and can't give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7706. For more information about submitting a formal complaint. So tonight, I think we have six speakers who've signed up to speak. And Carrie Delf will usher them in and introduce them since she has the power.
Thank you. We do have six speakers tonight. The first person on the list is Alex Peace, but we are not seeing him present. So the first speaker, we're moving on to number two, will be Melody Goodwin. Ms. Goodwin is coming in now as a panelist and you can turn on your microphone and I see your camera. Your three minutes begins.
Hi, everyone. So my name is Melody Goodwin and I'm a senior at North Eugene High School. And I just wanted to take this moment to address the hate speech that has been happening at North Eugene High School for the past couple of months. That was touched on earlier by Taryn. For those of you who don't know, recently there have been lots of white supremacist graffiti being found within our school. And there has also been on social media anonymous accounts that are spreading very hateful racist and anti-Semitic comments. Even going as far as to attack specific students of color within our school. Our students of color have been targeted with threats of violence and sexual assault publicly. Online and have been verbally harassed privately in direct messages. Many students at North have not been feeling safe attending school similar to what Violet was just talking about. And many of us do not feel supported by the response our administration has taken in light of these crimes. Right before winter break, we had a collective affinity group meeting with our administration. Where students demanded to have clear transparency with the crimes that were being committed. And clear transparency regarding the steps of the investigative process following up these crimes. Many students also voiced that we believe students who commit hateful speech should be removed from our school. For the safety of the collective community. And at the time, the administration was only able to promise up to a suspension of these individuals. Since then, the school has no longer kept us updated with the hate speech that we know is continually occurring in our school. The administration have given us no investigative follow-up after these crimes. And the administration has not outlined how these specific perpetrators of these hate crimes are going to be held accountable. Which in turn makes many students fear that our right to a safe learning environment is being jeopardized. Solely for the protection of these students who are committing the hateful acts. So jumping off of this, my questions that I posed to the board. Are first and foremost, how are you going to hold administration accountable? For failing to provide a safe learning environment for all students? And I also ask, what is the board doing currently? For ensure that hate speech is not tolerated in all of the 4J district? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marian Malcolm, who is coming in now.
Hello. Good evening, board members and interim superintendent Vanderkar and student reps. And I want to start by saying the student reps had some information of real substance tonight. And I was really glad to hear the issues that you raised. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and I'm going to talk about the new policy on racial harassment. Two preliminary comments. First, I'm very glad to see this policy taking shape and moving forward. As you just heard from the student who spoke, it's very needed. I'm pleased that the district has been working with Mika Contreras and other community members in its development. But I'm dismayed to see that this item is at the end of tonight's agenda. And as a general point, I think the board should reshape the order of items on the agenda. I've been listening to board meetings for months now and they are long, arduous endurance sessions. And they often follow a work session. My observation is that important items often land near the end of the agenda. When you've often been reading for meeting for close to five hours already. With all due respect, I've noticed that board members are tired and sometimes even crabby at that point. And that's right when important and sensitive issues are brought forward for discussion. Regarding the policy itself, while it contains excellent provisions, I think there are still things that need to be addressed. One concern is the language that states, quote, use of the N word regardless of intent is troubling and should be removed, end quote. You've seen a letter from Mika Contreras. I think she's 100% correct. In warning of the inadvertent consequences this language may have. Quite conceivably, it could result in censorship and discipline for BIPOC students, which is the last thing we want. Similarly, it could result in censorship of curriculum. This is not a hypothetical situation as people may remember. I'm excited about the creation of the new Hate and Bias Incident Response Team. I hope there will be considerable training for the members of this team. And that there will be room on the team for community members and parents. Finally, I encourage you to continue including community members, Mika Contreras in particular. As the district drafts the procedures that will accompany this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Marian. Who is up next?
The next speaker is Hill Killian, but we do not see them in the audience. So we're moving on to Sarah Klosser. Ms. Klosser?
Thank you. Hello, I want to thank all of you for your time, dedication and commitment to this board and additionally thank the student reps. A lot of the things that the student reps brought up today is a lot of the things that I'll be echoing too. I'm speaking to you all tonight because I'm a parent of a child of color who will be qualifying for special education services. And will enter the Eugene 4J School District next school year. Recently alarming data surfaced on the graduation rates of students with disabilities graduating at 55.33%. Under served races and ethnicities at 72.83%. And combined disadvantaged students at 68.33%. And each of these areas, Eugene 4J School District had the lowest graduation rates among other school districts. It was infuriating to me that parents were the ones sharing this data with each other and it was not coming directly from the school district. Because my child hits all of the above mentioned student groups. The milestone of entering kindergarten is now a milestone that I'm deeply worried about instead of an exciting and happy time. Unfortunately, it's taken my family nearly five months to get services in place for our son. So I feel really nervous and anxious about the transition to kindergarten, how that transition to kindergarten will be. I'm not only worried about this transition, I'm also deeply concerned about how my son will be welcomed, treated. And the education he will receive through high school. It's imperative that the school district is transparent and sharing this data with our community. And the actions that are being taken to address issues of equity in our children's education. The lack of transparency, conversation being given to this topic. And meaningful action steps towards increasing increasing graduation rates for these student groups. Leave many of us not feeling confident in the education our children will receive or are currently receiving. I'm urging. This school board to discontinue conversations about performative equity work such as art installations. And focus on data that gives us a picture as to why these student groups are graduating at such low levels. I also urge this board to use your approved equity tool when creating policies despite how much longer it may take. And to work with an equity consultant who is able to educate this board on white supremacy culture and the impact of this behavior. On our historically marginalized student groups. This work starts with all of you. You are the example for the entire district. If this board cannot have the hard conversations about race and equity, how can anyone else in the district? We want to see our children thrive. To Maya and Laurel, I want to commend you both for continuing to advocate for families and children like my own. For being willing to continue to pursue the hard conversations despite the toxic pushback and racism through silencing and blame you have experienced in your short tenure. I hope that this board continues to grow and seeks the consult of an equity consultant. This board will better support you, appreciate the lived experience you are bringing into the table and realize the toxic environment they are creating by their silence. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The final speaker is Harry Singer. The other two speakers have not appeared in the audience. So Mr. Singer will be the final one.
Hello Superintendent Vanderkar, I wish you luck in your search for a permanent superintendent position. Good evening, Chair Newman, 4J School Board, Student Representatives and Staff. Are you ready to stand up for our children yet? Despite the constant flow of contradicting propaganda pushed by our lead agencies, the LC School Board looked at the science and made the right decision for hundreds of parents. They sacrificed federal COVID funding for the benefit of their community. I get it. You're stuck between a rock and a hard place. One group of parents are upset at you for harming our society and our children. First by shutting down in-person learning and then by forcibly masking and coercively vaccinating them. If you listen to this group, then other parents would blame you for not taking COVID seriously. The problem is the latter have imposed their special form of tyranny on the former. And force there, in my opinion, unbalanced and biased risk assessments on the rest of us. We see a lot of scary numbers, but at the end of the day, the truth is the same as it has been for two years now. Our children are not at any greater risk of COVID than they are from the flu. It is time to embrace this knowledge and make the right decision for our children. This is where the narrative wants me to be an angry irrational parent. While I'm absolutely angry, my viewpoint is based in rational thinking and behavior. I have learned from watching the public process in Oregon. If I just talk softly, then I can be rude and offensive in my intent, but pretend that I'm kind and sympathetic to all listening. These mandates, rules and guidelines are not laws. The people of Oregon have natural rights that you are violating. Last month, the OHA held hearings on the permanent extension of indoor masking requirements and education-specific mask and vaccine mandates. Despite hours of testimony from hundreds of Oregonians, our lead agencies have chosen to ignore the voice of the people. Although I have been asserting my civil right to participate in society mask-free, I have allowed your authority over my children because I try to raise them the right way. To be polite and respect authority. In light of this revelation where by my count, over 99% of public comments were in opposition to continuing this oppressive state of being. I am advising 4J District families that OHA's authority and by the transitive property, your authority in this matter is illegitimate. Children are no longer required to wear masks if they don't want to. I'm sorry, but you simply don't hold this power over local families who are no longer asking your permission for common sense and decency. The people have spoken. I am standing up for what is right and encourage other parents to do the same. Thank you for providing this opportunity to speak and I look forward to return to in-person meetings where in addition to listening to our board follow their own agenda. Myself and other parents can mingle, network, listen to and learn from each other. And then I can't ignore what Melody spoke about at the beginning with North Eugene in my backyard. I'm absolutely appalled at this. It's frustrating that our children are growing up in a social media world where accountability seems to be missing. There's absolutely no place for hate in our community and I find it hard to believe that nobody knows this is coming from and can't do anything about it. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Harry. So Carrie, is that the end of our public comment?
That was the final public speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that. So next on our agenda is our comments from employee groups. I think we have Sabrina Gordon from EEA. Are you in the audience, Sabrina? We also have Peter Tromba. If he's here, we could go with him first and.
Sabrina is coming in now.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Thanks Judy. Sorry that took a minute tonight. Appreciate the time. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Vanderkar. My name is Sabrina Gordon and I'm president of Eugene Education Association. I just have to start by saying how great it is to have our student reps here on the board with us tonight and just listening to your comments. It's so important that we have your voice. Your voice is the most important voice in our district and it's just really nice to have you here representing. The licensed educators of 4J have been working since the beginning of this school year without a contract. As you've been hearing and seeing, this year has been by far the most difficult anyone in education has experienced. The crushing weight of trying to meet students' emotional and academic needs. Continued anxiety over health and safety and untenable workloads continue to bear down on us every single day. Many of these challenges educators face were mentioned by students in this meeting tonight. Meanwhile, we are still negotiating this expired contract. We are making progress in some areas and are appreciative of that. But a key piece of negotiations remains stalled. The last offer from 4J in the area of salary increase was 1.5%. Based on the average licensed educator salary, this would result in about $60 more per month. Or about 37 cents an hour. Is that really what this district believes is the worth of these educators who are showing up for students every day? Considering the current state of 4J's budget, including the largest general fund reserve in collective memory. Increased funding from the Student Success Act and federal funds to support COVID relief. We believe you can do better. You must do better if you want to retain current 4J educators. And attract new ones in the midst of an education workforce shortage. If attendance at bargaining sessions like the one last night was any indication. EEA members are paying attention. Our community is paying attention. More than 500 people were listening in last night to hear what the district's next financial offer will be. We discussed other things instead, but we all look forward to hearing how much 4J really values its teachers, specialists, counselors. Nurses, librarians, psychologists, special educators and other licensed staff. We expect to find out next Wednesday when we sit down together to continue bargaining. And for the sake of our students in 4J, we hope that your next offer truly reflects the critical jobs that you count on educators to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. And we have Peter Tromba from MAPS.
And there he is.
There we go. Thank you all. I do want to just echo what folks have said. It's great to have students in the room and have student voice. Good evening, Chair Newman, School Board members and Superintendent Vanderkar. I am Peter Tromba, President of MAPS. The face of MAPS is usually a building administrator like me. However, as we have described this year, managers, professionals and supervisors are a select group of leaders. And decision makers who have profound district-wide impact on the education of every student. And we haven't even yet shared about technology at support services and the instruction departments. Because we are not a union, we have no real leverage as a group to affect salaries and working conditions for our members. Our work and my work tonight is to make arguments when these arguments are called for. Under the leadership of Superintendent Vanderkar, we are making progress to address equitable pay for administrators. But issues remain among the rest of our group. What we are seeing as a group is a precipitous loss of key managers, professionals and supervisors. And we are hearing concerns of people about how much the district values them. We understand that human resources is leading vital pay equity work that will inform this topic. But we believe there are policy decisions that this board could make. That could give HR and departments the latitude to address immediate problems. The fact is that in certain areas, especially technical areas. Our members are just not qualified to work in other districts. They're qualified to work in most any large local organization. Our members are recruited and they're recruited with offers of better pay and working conditions. When I worked at the state, which is a much more bureaucratic place than 4J. We had the authority to cut through the process when needed. For example, we could add a T, just a T to a job description because the job was technical. And we had the latitude to pay that person differently because. and we had the latitude to pay that person differently because of the market and the importance to our agency. Right now, we are talking about cost of living increases. The amount of the district budget required to give departments latitude to keep vital MAPS members is a drop in the bucket compared to COLA. I ask that the board give policy authority and/or direction to the district to do what it takes to sustain these critical MAPS members and what they provide. We have formed an economic committee to address the issues of managers, professionals and supervisors, and we look forward to working with the board and the district moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that's, we don't have OSEA here, correct, tonight? Don't have them on the list, so want to give them a chance to speak if they're here.
We do not have OSEA this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. Now we are moving on to board comments. So committee reports and individual board member reports. So do I have a volunteer to go first?
Gordon.
Volunteer.
Go ahead, Martina. I'll follow you.
Sure. So while Judy and I, as the leadership, aren't a committee, we thought that maybe the best place to share where we are with working agreements just would be here in comments and committee reports. So at our mini-retreat with the support and facilitation of Brenda Brainard, we discussed and collectively drafted a lot of changes. Both Judy and I took detailed notes on that. And so over the weekend, we met to update the working agreements based on all of that collaborative workshopping. We want to make sure that we give folks time to read that final draft document, so it'll be available to you soon. And I believe that we are planning to have it on the agenda for next meeting, though I could have my dates wrong, and hopefully we can vote on that soon. I will just use my remaining moments to say how glad I am to see our students back again and to have our student board representatives. So many students spoke tonight, and also we had the wonderful words of our student representatives, and that really means so much. Mentorship and connection with students is a great gift, and I think why many of us are in this line of work or volunteer work. I also read recently that adults, every adult should get themselves a young person as their mentor so that they have someone to guide them and help them understand the perspective of young folks. I just love that concept, and the young people who I've been close with for years, reading that made me realize that they've been my mentors as much as I've been theirs, and that, oh, that made me feel good. So on this board, each board member is partnered with a student board rep, and so I am pleased and seriously jazzed that I've been partnered with Taryn and get them as my mentor. So thank you to all of you for being here and for being our collective mentors.
Pardon?
Thank you. We've recently received numerous letters from educators showing that we're facing an emergency that could harm our students for a generation to come. Educators have been pushed so far past the breaking point that we are in realistic danger of ending up with the only people left teaching being those who are burnt out and bitter, who leave as soon as they can find something better, and that's who will be taking care of our kids. One teacher at Kelly Middle School described some of the responsibilities teachers have taken on, all in addition to their normal jobs. Quote, "My prep time is filled with students stopping by to process their emotional crises, students asking me for food and water, and students simply desperate to connect with an adult on a personal level." I was also recently asked to modify my curriculum for students so that all their work can be completed with multiple choice questions. This student had an adult with them in elementary school all the time, but I'm told this is no longer possible. No one is handing me modified work to give to the student, so I'm now in a position of overhauling literally everything I have ever created to meet this need, and this is just one of similar examples. The same teacher also facilitates the Gay-Straight Alliance at Kelly, preparing lesson plans, maintaining a website, and serving as proxy counselor for over 60 students who turn to them as a trustworthy adult, even though that's not really part of their job. "I love my job and I love teaching," this person says, "but I'm completely overwhelmed and out of gas." Another middle school teacher wrote the quote, "We are all on the edge. We have huge shortages of teachers and even fewer entering the profession. This problem is not just because of the pandemic, it's been brewing for a long time. Our wages have stagnated while the cost of living has gone up and our students' needs have skyrocketed. If 4J wants to retain and attract educators, they need to settle our contract now. We're becoming an endangered species." And finally, a nurse wrote who describes herself as, quote, "Not just tired, but exhausted, overworked and feeling disrespected and unsupported. Since the beginning of the school year, I have continuously worked two to three staffing assignments without backup. I've seen five nurses leave the district since summer. The seven Sheldon Region Schools have twice been without any other school nurses for these 4,000 students, and all of this while trying to support three medically fragile students who need daily care, nine medically complex students in other buildings, and almost 100 life-threatening kids in six buildings. What keeps me coming back every day is my love for the students and knowing that they could be at risk without me, but I can't work like this much longer." Last night, more than half of all licensed educators in the district attended union negotiations, and this is a testament to how urgent the situation is. This is not a time to be saving up reserves for a rainy day. That day is here. We're in a hurricane. Teachers' proposals also include things that are critical for students and families, like making sure that both special ed and general education teachers are able to attend IEP meetings and enact an effective plan for how to best serve students, a need called out by several student representatives tonight. This is a time to dig as deep into our pockets as we possibly can, obviously without putting the district in financial peril in order to do right by our students and to save ourselves from a cataclysmic loss of our best educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Who would like to go next? Maya.
Thank you, Judy. I'm so excited to welcome our student board representatives. Your voices are crucial to making the work we do as a board authentic, well-informed and inclusive. You being here elevates this body. Already tonight, your reports have brought such important insight to us, insight that can only come from students, particularly regarding the concerns you have so openly shared. I look forward to hearing more. We are so lucky to have you, and I'm looking forward to growing my relationship with my student partner, Yoselie. I want to also thank the folks who spoke tonight about our developing racial harassment policy, with particular appreciation for 4J student Melody Goodwin, as well as the newest community members who wrote in. I have thoughts about this policy and the ongoing work it is taking to getting it ready to be rolled out, but we will reserve those for the portion of that, for that portion of the agenda tonight. I hope you stay tuned in for that portion of the meeting or come back to listen to the recording. Everyone in the district is buried deep in endless responsibilities and are burning the proverbial candle at both ends. And at the front of so many folks' minds right now is contract bargaining. In fact, last night's bargaining session, as we heard from Sabrina with the Eugene Education Association, was attended by so many, extra chairs had to be pulled out for those attending in person, and the Zoom cutoff of 500 attendees was quickly reached. It is my hope that for the next round, we will increase the Zoom capacity. People are tuned in and for good reason. Our teachers have been working since the start of the year without an active contract, working under the status quo from their expired contract. This not only impacts morale and heightened stress levels, it commands a tremendous amount of time, attention and emotional energy from our educators and also from the district team who represents the board in negotiations. Additionally, our classified staff is watching closely as their bargaining season will begin in just a few months. And finally, our administrators, managers, professionals and supervisors, MAPS, are also paying close attention as historically much of what gets agreed upon in the teacher's contract extends into their contract as well. Contracts which, as we just heard from Principal Tromba, are not negotiated. What is agreed upon now essentially impacts all employees in the district. And then there are students and their caregivers. How we support our educators matters deeply to these stakeholders as well. It's undeniable that any support we extended, teachers, classified staff and administrators, et cetera, directly benefits our students as the relationship between students and staff is symbiotic. We cannot separate student and staff needs. When we exclusively say we put students' needs first, we run the risk of creating an artificial divide, one which ignores the fact that supporting our staff is, in fact, the foundation of putting students first. But let's not split hairs. Of course, we need to put students first. That is exactly what our educators are expertly incorporating into their contract proposal, the necessary means by which our staff can be supported in their daily work of lifting up our students so they can achieve their greatest success in the realm of academic, social and emotional learning and relational and mental health, while optimizing their safety, sense of connection, nutrition and overall well-being. We must drive our decisions with the understanding that the supports we offer, which benefit all of our staff, also benefit our students. By coming to a swift and respectful agreement which recognizes and celebrates our educators as professionals worthy of fair compensation, safe working conditions, manageable workloads and our trust, we will also see systemic benefits as well. To illustrate this, I offer you an example. I recently nominated a Kelly Middle School teacher, Tim Everett, to serve on the Equity Committee. He struggled with the decision to accept or decline the invitation, not because he didn't see the work as amongst our highest priorities. He absolutely does. But rather, he regretfully declined because, to quote him, "I am completely overwhelmed and out of gas." He goes on to list all of the duties for which he is responsible, which fall well outside the standard expectations of his teacher. Despite the long list, one point stood out to me in bearish sharing with the community, and I quote, "I am serving on the executive board of the Eugene Education Association, as well as the representative council. As you're aware, there are many people that are confused about how hard teachers are working right now and keeping our union focused and strong, keeping our union strong and active is a huge priority for me. I believe that strong contracts are one of the best ways we can serve students. If the obstacles we are seeing at bargaining were not there, this work would not need to be done, and I would likely be able to serve my students and community in other ways, like being on the Equity Committee." This is just one example of how our system will be better served by meeting our educators in the pursuit of a contract that moves the needle forward in the realm of overall staff support. I know I've gone a little bit long. If you bear with me, I'm almost done. Because of this heightened focus on bargaining, I attended last night's in-person meeting. And I leave you with an image that was burned in my mind as the two bargaining teams representing the district and EEA sat at a rectangular collection of tables surrounded by educators. Noticed immediately that the majority of those in attendance had laptops or iPads open. They largely had those devices open not to take notes or find distraction in the world of Wordle or Animal Crossing. They had their devices open because despite this being a meeting that started at 5:30 and extended for several hours, a time that is notably outside their contracted hours, they were planning lessons and reading assignments. The tragic irony was not lost on me that educators were quite literally donating time to the district while the representatives were working to have their contracts strengthened. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Who would like to, who else? We have Laurel, Alicia and Mary. Alicia.
Thanks Judy. I will concede my time to Maya. Thanks Maya for that. Real quick, we've attended a lot of meetings this week and last week, but I have not done any committee meetings. We had a lot the week before. So I don't have any committee meetings or comments to make. I, like everyone else, want to welcome students. It's great to have you here and to have you speak up and to thank the people that did the orientation because it was very different flavor from our students than it has been. So thank you. 22 seconds, the rest goes to Maya. Thanks. Oh wait, can I do one more thing? I just want to support Mary and Malcolm's. Let's readjust the agenda because we are already very late. I've been at this an hour and a half and haven't even got to business. So I just thank you, Mary, and I agree with you.
Well, we will have a conversation in leadership about that, and it's hard to know what's more and less important. It depends who you're asking. Okay. Oh, great, Mary. Thanks.
Hand down. First, I want to congratulate our music students. Those, the accomplishments are amazing, especially given COVID and that they've been distancing from teachers and opportunities to perform together. So as an old advocate for music in our schools, I want to congratulate those students. So thank you Judy and Superintendent Vanderkar for bringing that to our attention and recognizing those students. And I want to welcome our student board representatives. It's really nice to have you back. My student Noah and I are planning a social get-together as soon as she can find time on her calendar. She's busier than I am. And I want to thank Sea Chains for their work. That was a great work session. And then it's a Taryn at North. Oh, you're still there? Okay, good. I want to let you know that I have been pushing to have the district adopt, and we did adopt a climate change goal, and so really talking about how the organization can implement some of the things you've talked about. The building, heating, transportation and food are three of the big things that we do, and so I think there's lots of opportunity, and I hope maybe you can be involved in the planning and certainly the discussion around that topic. So thank you for bringing that up. And then I want to report on the North team. Last Friday, the 28th, Gordon and I met with the staff team. And Gordon, if you want to take 30 seconds to correct me or add to it, I'll make this short, so please feel free to do that. We talked about a couple of things, the staff meetings, the parent and the community engagement, and then space and money with regard to the bond of the buildings there. Melissa Ibarra is working with the principals there at YG in Kelly, and this really, this year is the first year they've actually been in the same building together. Given the schedules and the COVID protocols, it's been hard to get everybody all together at once. There is a meeting set, I think it's Monday, where both staffs can get together and just talk about what they, that they want and what their vision is. And then after that, because it was the feeling of the team that it was important to have that conversation start at the staff level, then we would look in the springtime later for a greater parent and community engagement. And then Andy Die was there too, and he noted that, and I thought, I just hadn't thought about this, that before the cold weather and you could have lunch outside, maybe the space of all being together wasn't that critical. But now that we're pretty, they're pretty much inside all day, it changes the dynamic. So it actually was actually good that we waited to meet, or they waited to meet. I shouldn't say we. We talked about the Old North Building and what's going to happen with that or not happen with it. We talked about when the different buildings are going to be opening and how it's all set up and it'll be done, and then Camus Ridge, and then that whole set of things that'll happen. And Fall of 2024 is when Camus Ridge will open, Fall of 2023 is when the New North will open. And then we talked a little bit about the Portables at Howard, and they're both there and they're working. And talking about, we talked a little bit about tree turfing Sweet Johnson Stadium there, since we're there anyway. And then we did talk about engaging with the River Road Community Organization, since that's the community organization who's impacted most by this. And Gordon, what did I miss? I've got, took three minutes and 29 seconds.
I think you covered it all.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Great, thank you. Thanks for working, you and Gordon and Mary on that team, to move that along. Laurel.
Hi. So I also would like to thank our music honors students. I didn't know that was coming per se, and I really appreciated seeing those really proud faces. Music is so important during this time for me, and so I really celebrate all those that endeavor to make that and bring that to everyone. I also hope to be on this board, and I don't know, I'm new. I've been here for about six months. If there's a time when we also celebrate our career and technical students with honors, because I would love to see that. I'd also, I really want to thank the beautiful, stunning, powerful voices of our students. Yes, you guys rocked it. I'm older, so I can say things like that and still pretend I'm cool. Our student board reps were amazing. Though I fear that their words like mine will be undervalued. There's a comedian who says, "If you want a pretty lie, ask an adult. If you want the truth, ask a child." In this case, ask your students. I have wanted the whole time to hear more from our students because every time I talk to students, I have several children of my own, I get the absolute unvarnished truth of what's happening and why it, and you're living it. What we talk about the whole time, you're living it. This is your work area. My work area is Lang County. Your work area is this. And I appreciate the truth that you brought to this meeting. It was so important. I took notes of everything. It's, it's what we need to hear. That's how we make change. That's how we change a culture. That's how we actually look at the things that are not working and then go... And then go, instead of going, "Shame, everybody, things aren't working," we say, "Hey, we've noticed this. We need to talk about it, and we're not going to pretend it's not happening." We need to see and hear, and I'm going to say that again, because it's not happening. We need to see and hear as a board and as staff what you are telling us. We don't need pictures on a wall with nice little sayings. We need you to hear when people are scared because they're in this school and not feeling valued. Their bathrooms aren't open. You know, this is important stuff. So thank you so much. I, um, that's, I just, that's all I really wanted to talk about. I had a whole nother thing to talk about, but I'm like, no. You guys rocked it out of the park, and you said probably about 70% of the stuff I wanted to talk about. So thank you, and keep bringing it. If anybody says otherwise, come talk to me. I'll, I'll give you that pep talk you need, because this is it right here. And all the board members heard you. This is a great group of people. We may not do things well all the time, but everybody is here because they care and they want. They care about you guys and what's going on in our schools. So we all heard you, and we're all going to be working on these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Well said. Okay, now we move into the consent calendar. We have one item on our consent calendar tonight. Martina, it looks like you might have a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Do I have a second? Maya, thanks. So Martina's moved. Oh, no, Maya.
Seconded it, and then I would like to talk.
Okay, we have a second. And on the, the motion, now we can have a discussion. It looks like, Maya, you have something to say.
I'm just, I, I was, I was expecting the list of folks from the Equity Committee to be on that this time. So maybe if Superintendent Vanderkar could just give me a timeline, so I don't have to ask for it at the end of the agenda, since it's not this time on it.
Well, can we? I think we should vote on the motion, because that isn't, that question isn't related to the motion, and maybe we could ask her after that, okay? So I'm going to call the question on the motion, which are the minutes that we just did the motion for. So all those in favor of the motion about approving the, the consent calendar with the minutes in them, say aye, raise your hand. Okay, that looks like seven yeses, and the motion passes unanimously. Now, Maya, would you like to ask your question?
I heard it. So Judy and I talked about it earlier, and I think that we were finishing up. We had some additions, and not everyone had said yes yet. So I think we'll be ready by the next one, but going into print, we weren't ready just at the time. So we'll have it. There were a lot of names. Well, you know how many names were.
So to follow that up, will the additions be shared with Alicia and I? Or is that not happening that same way? Or are they the additions that we already brought in before, or?
You were on the email when people said, "Could we add?" You, there's no surprises.
Okay, so just one addition.
But it took a while for all 30 to to respond.
Okay.
Okay, so we will see that hopefully at our next meeting. Thank you, Maya. Okay, now we are on for items for information. And Superintendent, do you want to introduce who's here from Lane ESD?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Tony Skurdo, who is the superintendent for Lane ESD that covers all the Lane County Public Schools. And I do believe Board Member, Board Chair Linda Hamilton is with him. And tonight, they're going to talk about the, the local service plan. And they have to bring it to each one of the school districts that it affects, and we're one of them. And what we'll do is it'll be on a future, or an act, oh my gosh, an item for a future action later. But we're putting it earlier, so the two of them don't have to stay on, in the room and wait to that part of the meeting, because apparently we agree with Marion as well. So there you go. So Tony, Superintendent Skurdo, and ooh, Board Chair Linda Hamilton, or I can see Linda. Oh, I see Tony. I see both of them. So Tony, please take over and explain what we need to see happen here.
Excellent. Superintendent Vanderkar, thank you very much. Chair Newman, Board Directors of 4J School District, thanks for the time. I'm going to see the beginning of my time to my Board Chair Linda Hamilton, because otherwise I take up too much time and she doesn't get much. So Linda, why don't you go ahead and jump in? I'll let you start.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight to speak on this service plan, the local service plan of Lane ESD and 4J School Districts. I've been listening, and I appreciate each and every one of you. I know that month of January was appreciation, and I want to thank each and every one of you for serving on the 4J Board and your time and energy. And I have to second what Macam, Macam and Judy said about these long meetings. They can be cut a little short. I say that because I've followed 4J meeting for some years now, six going on. And 4J Board is my mentor board. I look up to the Board of 4J. And some have been a little longer than others, and I, I dearly admire Alyssa Hayes and how she handles matters of the Board. And others who've been there a little longer, and I'm learning more for the new who has come. But Gordon Sabrina and Mary Walton and Alyssa Hayes and Judy been there a little longer, and I'm learning from Maya and Laurel, who's new signing to the Board. So I want to thank you guys and appreciate your time and your energy. Appreciate your students' comments tonight, which are very, very, very important, because that's what we are there. As someone was saying, you're an example for the entire districts. And so I would love to say, you know, please, please do not let others who have lost their purpose get in the way of you fulfilling your purpose for what we are here on these boards for. We all have purpose. So please do not, do not let others get in the way of you fulfilling yours. And again, thank you. I want to thank you for the racial harassment policy that's going forward. I thank your Superintendent for inviting community organizations to the meetings to discuss around the racial harassment policy. Thank your Board Member Maya and Laurel, who attended one of the meeting for that racial harassment policy. So I just hope you go forward, stand behind that policy. We had our last meeting. I think that was our last meeting. I haven't had anything else that I'm aware of on January 26th, and there was really no objections or or concerns that would stop that from going forward. That was some discussion, and as we implement things, matters always may come up later for opening more discussion. But I want to thank your, your Board, your staff, the 4J staff. Thank Lisa, who's always been there comforting everyone through matters. Even when I was there in person on November the 17th, her and Laurel came and comforted me and taught my shoulder. So thank you, guys, for doing the work you do. And again, I leave you with not forgetting your purpose of what you're there for, and do not let others get in the way of you fulfilling your purpose. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. I'm going to jump into the local service plan in, in just a minute. But before I actually get into the local service, and I'm not going to give you tons of detail, because it hasn't changed a whole lot from the last year. I know some of you were here prior years for many years, and you noted some changes. Some of you are new, and, and, and there are a lot of things in there that you may not know, but I don't want to get into all of the weeds of it. I do want to talk about in this last year, some of the, I think, really incredible cooperation that's gone on between our school districts in terms of trying to deal with the ins and outs, the turnarounds, the spins of COVID, and what we've been facing and how we've been trying to deal with it. I, I do have to say there's some real tangible examples of the cooperation. And I think there's tangible examples of 4J School District taking a lead in our county. And I really want to shout out some appreciation for that, and Superintendent Vanderkar, especially for the work that you're doing with yourself and your staff. The vaccination effort was incredible, and so that would not have happened among educators in Lane County without 4J stepping up and actually agreeing to not just do your staff, but also include others. So just looking in terms of, at equity in, in big district, little district, and middle-sized districts, that was, I think, a good example of making sure there was something for everybody in that. Now, jumping to the local service plan, the annual requirement for all of our component school boards is we ask you to vote on it. This current local service plan is in its second year, and we prepare these in two-year cycles. So there isn't a lot of difference in this. So instead of talking about differences, what I really want to focus on are some things that probably would be hitting your radar in terms of the implementation of it. One of the biggest is in our special ed area, and that is that the special ed life skills programs that we've been running due to a severe staffing shortage have been running less than five days a week. They've been running four days a week, and that's untenable, and it's not, and that's something we want to continue. We've been working extremely hard to recruit staff, because there's no other way to get to that fifth day for students without enough staff. It's just not safe to do it in person with students. I'm happy to report that yesterday, our Fed administrators had, had, have enough bodies that have come in recently with applications. We had three days in a row of new, new employee orientation, yes, today, yesterday, and the day before. So we now have enough staff to trip into five days with our students. It's not going to happen all at once, but it's going to roll out here in February. So that's something that's important. It's also something that we do cooperate with 4J on in terms of the life skills consortium and run this classroom. So as, as something in the local service plan that hasn't been working primarily due to staffing shortage, I, I want to tell you that we're moving in the right direction. That's something that, that's, that's good to report. In terms of the other things in the local service plan, there are some things that we're getting as ESDs that are additions to things we've done before. One of them is in this whole notion of having a reopening advisor. ODE has tapped the ESDs on the back and said, "Hey, schools need a reopening advisor." Now, we thought that was all about reopening school, starting in the fall. The reopening advisor is no longer reopening advisor. Schools are open and enclosed and open due to COVID cases. They're trying to be the advisors on all the intricacies that are coming out of ODE and OHA. So we have, we have a person that's done that, and it's done a great job. So that's another local service plan that's been timely and responsive. With that, I'll just let you know that our superintendents approved this. All 16 superintendents of our school districts approved this in November unanimously. The Lane ESD School Board approved this, and I know you will not take action tonight, but I would like to let you know that if you have questions tonight, I'd be glad to answer them. And if you have them between now and the time you want to take action, feel free also to ask, and I'll give you more detailed answers in between this time. So with that, that's, that's kind of it. And so I'll entertain questions that you may have at this moment.
Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent or our Board Chair here? I don't see any questions from the, oh, Alicia's got her hand up.
No, I don't have a question. I just want to thank Linda for your words. I know it's, we're all having, it's been a tough year for all of us, and your support and, and your willingness to work through and chat with members of our Board has been so helpful and beneficial. Thanks for your leadership in our community. Thanks.
I'd like to echo that myself, because I also wanted to thank Linda for serving as a representative of, of our district and all the districts in Lane County on the Oregon School Board Association leadership. So this is your second term, and we really appreciate you there, representing us. And Mary has her hand up.
Got it. Okay, sorry. I, I know, I just wanted to comment on the, the special education comments made by, by the Superintendent. I, it's, it's tough, and I see it when I'm in the schools, and it's, it's tough to see kids that are in need go without what they deserve, and legally, we're required to provide. So I just know that it's a struggle, and I'm glad that you feel like there's an off light at the end of the tunnel is the correct term, but that there's some improvement in it. So, so thank you for saying that at the ESD level, and thank you, Linda, for your service as Board Chair, making that happen.
Thank you.
Maya has her hand up.
Hey, I want to commend you for, for increasing the days from four to five, even though it's on a rollout. That, that has been something I've been hearing from a lot of 4J parents about the, the concern and, and the, and the equity issue of which students are not receiving the, the full schedule offered. So well done. And I also am curious if there's a chance that we might have to learn more about, and I have to look at my notes, collaborative problem solving that you guys are, are, have been implementing and rolling out. I don't know if that's a question you can answer to me, or if that's something that we might be able to do one-on-one in a conversation. But when I learned about it, I got really excited, and, and it feels very much in line with our All Students Belong protocol. So again, I, I'm putting you on the spot, and I didn't know I was going to put you on the spot. So if, if a direct conversation is appropriate, or a future maybe presentation to our whole Board to just learn a little bit more about how that's working out for you all, that would be tremendous.
And Director of Us, I'll, I'll keep it short, but yes, that's something, we, we don't have a plan necessarily to roll that throughout the entire county. But that's something that if our districts ask for it, we could. It's, it's a program that's really prevalent at Lane School, which is our school for students with a comprehensive behavior support program. And there are Lane, Lane School students that are 4J students, as well as students from other districts. That staff's doing a remarkable job with it. And yes, I think another time to go more in detail on it or have more information about it, but they are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It is a great program. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Superintendent. I was just looking to see if there are any other questions or comments.
I would say we did, our Board did, if you don't mind, I would, our Board did appoint Law to Allow Budget Committee last night. And so there will be more discussion around that collaborative piece among the districts and boards and committees that everybody gets to serve on, different committees and different boards. And I, you know, I forgot to mention with all the, everything your students are saying around, you know, equity. 4J has always presented an equity stance. And I want to thank your Superintendent, because things are pretty intense, and you're getting a lot of racial incidents happening at this school. And twice I showed up at North Eugene High School, eight o'clock in the morning, racial incidents, and your Superintendent was there. So I want to thank you that she's making that a priority, and appreciate that. Oregon School Board Association, Oregon School Board Caucus of Color are strongly behind female superintendents and supporting our female superintendent and seeing more female superintendents in the districts. So I ask that you guys also be on the lookout. We want more female superintendents in the school districts and more BIPOC in this school district and teachers of color. So Tony, I'm, is, is, we had a great presentation last night from WAN, Western Regional Education Network.
I could say one more thing, and again, I, I know everybody's been noting the, the student involvement you've got with your, your student representatives. That's fantastic. We also have a youth equity council that our school improvement team puts together across the county. And I, I don't know if, if the current student reps here are on it or know about it, but it's great, it'd be great to connect that, that student voice again. We all think it's powerful, and many districts are rolling into that. Great example that you guys put out tonight, so thank you.
Okay, I know this, we could go on chatting about things all night.
Yes, yes. Keep like this two month in mind.
And again, thanks for your time and for waiting for your turn.
Thank you.
All right. Good night. The next thing on our agenda is to receive an update on graduation rates. I hope, I hope the one parent that asked for some more information is on the line still. But if not, hopefully she'll listen to the recording.
So I'd like to introduce Dr. Louro and Dr. Die. I'm actually not seeing Andy. Maybe he's just not. So, oh, there, there we go. So we have prepared data, and as I explained in my opening comments, we, it's hard to compare to last year, so you'll hear a little bit about that. But also, we have been working on our affinity group numbers, and we had, we did see some drops in the last set of data. So Oscar, I'm going to turn it over to you and Andy, and we'll get going.
Good evening. I'm Oscar Louro, Director of Research and Planning. And Dr. Dai and I today are going to talk about our graduation outcomes for our students last year. We received the data, as you can see in the next slide, on January 20 from the Oregon Department of Education. As, as in previous years, there are five metrics. There are the four-year and five-year graduation rates. Those are the percentage of students who started high school four or five years prior and earn regular or modified diplomas. Then there's the four and five-year completion rates that include also students who receive extended standard diplomas or GEDs, graduation equivalent diplomas. And also the dropout rate that is the percentage of all students, not just senior, all students in high school who drop out of formal education during the year. So when we look at our data, what we see is that for both the four-year graduation rate and the completion rate, there was a drop last year compared to the 2020, but we see, we have seen long-term growth. While for five-year graduation and completion rates, what we saw is an increase last year reaching the highest level ever in 4J since OD started measuring graduation rates in a consistent way. And we saw a decline in the dropout rate last year, third year in a row, reaching the lowest value ever. Since OD is measuring it in a consistent way. These are the four-year graduation rates. And we see that for both for Oregon and 4J, there has been a long-term growth path. But in both cases, the graduation rate dropped last year. As the superintendent mentioned, part of that drop, but not at all the whole thing, the whole drop is due to the fact that in trimester three of 2020, due to school closures, OD allow schools to have more flexibility in assigning credit to students based on past performance, especially students who had difficulty accessing distance learning. But we see that long-term growth, the drop last year, and that 4J has a lower graduation rate than the state. The next slide has a lot of numbers, but what you can see here is for different groups of students. In 4J, the graduation rates from 2013 to 2021. And what we see, well first, if you look at the column for 2021, you can see the magnitude of the graduation gaps among our groups that are significant, very significant. You also can see that for all, almost all groups from 2013 on, there has been a trend of increase. All the way from 2013 to 2020, when we reached our highest graduation rate ever, and then a drop for most of the groups in 2021. But still, if you look at the last column, growth, the whole period from 2013 to 2021, you see significant growth. And you also see that some of the student groups that traditionally have been underserved by the educational system are the ones who grew their graduation rate the most from 2013 to 2021. That's African-American students, students with disabilities, Latino students, English learners, students navigating poverty. And that also means that the graduation gaps in 4J have been reduced because those groups were the ones who grew the most. For example, when you look at students with disabilities from 2013 to 2021, they grew, you see in the last column, twenty-six points, while all students combined grew fifteen points. That means that the gap was reduced by eleven points. Still, the gap is very significant. For students with disability, the graduation rate was fifty-five percent for all students combined, seventy-nine. So big gap, but there was a reduction over time. And the most significant drop in 2021 was for our Native American students. You said at the bottom that our Native American students had a graduation rate of seventy-three percent in 2020 and a graduation rate of thirty-five percent in 2021. Groups that have, and we had talked about this in the past, groups that have few students are more likely to move up and down over time because there's a few students, the outcomes of a few students changes the percentage more. But such a huge drop cannot be just explained as variability and random variability due to a small sample size. And we are looking at more detail of the data, but we, I think you have been aware that our Native American students is one of the student groups that had had more obstacles for continued engagement in school during the pandemic. And that's a part. And the next slide. We see that another very important factor for graduation rate is the percentage of ninth graders who are on track to graduating four years. That OD defines as is percentage of students who at the end of ninth grade had earned at least six credits, high school. And there is some for the to have that metric is the idea is that students need twenty-four credits to graduate, that six per year. So that's why OD defines on track and when we look at this metric, we see that it traces what later happens with graduation. We see a trend of growth, but then a drop for a class of twenty-two. And the pandemic has altered all the correlations basically between our indicators. But this correlation between on track and graduation has been very strong. If that correlation were to remain stable, and we don't know that, but if it were to remain stable, what we see in our future is the class of 2022 had the highest percentage of students on track ever. But the two cohorts of students who entered high school during the pandemic had a much, much significant low, significantly lower percentage of students on track. And Dr. Dai later on is going to talk a little bit about all, you probably already know most of it, but she's going to talk about all some of the things the district and our schools are doing to help those students, well, and all students to graduate on time, like more students in eleventh and twelfth grade having fuller schedules and more availability of courses in summer school and other initiatives that you already have heard about most of them. Another factor is another factor in graduation outcomes is student participation in career and technical education, CTE classes. You can see here that a CTE participants who at least have taken one class in one CTE class and CTE concentrator that had taken at least two classes. Every year had a higher graduation rate than the whole student population. So that's also an important factor and explains part of our improvement in graduation since our CTE programs have been growing so much. Then when we compare 4J's graduation rate to that of other districts, what we see is that among the sixteen districts in Lane County, 4J's graduation rate moved from being eighth, they've highest, highest to be the seventh highest. But among the ten largest districts in Oregon, our graduation rate moved down from being the eighth highest to the ninth highest from 2020 to 2021. We have two in our study plan, we have two key performance indicators related to graduation outcomes. One is the four-year graduation rate, the other is the five-year completion rate. And what we see when we compare 4J to the state is that our four-year graduation rate is lower than the state, the states, but our five-year completion rate is higher than the state. And this is the five-year completion rate. You see growth in the last three years and it's higher than it was for the state. Finally, when we look at the dropout rate, we see three years of decline in the dropout rate reaching our lowest value ever, two percent since the state, OD started measuring it in a consistent way in 2013. And now Dr. Dai, I think, is going to talk about what are we doing to improve our graduation rates.
Hello, everyone. Dr. Dai, Andy, otherwise known as the Director of Secondary Education here in Eugene School District 4J. It's not, not a flat answer. There are a number of things that we're doing to try to best serve students as they move their way through high schools. Oscar was absolutely correct when saying that career and technical education programs are super important. I think our brightest light, so to speak, in terms of seeing a pathway through high school is the college preparatory pathway. And that's a fantastic pathway and an aspiration for everyone who comes into high school, but not necessarily aligned with what folks want. And if what we want is to provide a series of pathways through high school for students that have a wide variety of life goals. If what we want is to serve them, then then career and technical education can't be seen as second to college or what I would do instead of college. It's frankly a first-year aspiration for a number of our students. And so what we need to do is amplify those career and technical education pathways so that they seem as apparent and as articulated and as frankly important and aspirational as any other pathway. That's something that we've been working on as a district for a number of years and something that we'll continue to work on and amplify. What we do know is that in our district, if a student ends their ninth grade year or shall I say enters their 10th grade year on track to graduation, which means they have six, earned six credits over the course of that first year, then there's over a ninety percent chance that they graduate from high school. And if they don't do that, then there's, you know, less than a fifty percent chance that they graduate from high school. And so what we want to do is track students' performance and provide support on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis to ensure that they're getting the support that they need through that very first important year. And I can't, I can't stress that enough. So that they're getting the support that they need and making the progress that they need to make so that they end that year with six credits. You know, just like early literacy, it's very easy to catch up when there's very little space to catch up. If a student goes into their 10th grade year and they're behind, they've not earned the credits that they need. They begin to feel as though it's too tall a hill to climb, that the school is not supporting them, that they begin to look for other pathways. And that's where, that's where we should be stepping in and helping them recognize ways to, you know, recover from, from a lack of success. That's just a part of life. I think that there are ways that we can offer classes within our core content that actually appeal to students. We did a survey earlier this year of all of our ninth grade students, non-IHS ninth grade students, and asked them about the degree to which they felt their classes helped them outside of school itself. And quite a number of them said that they didn't see the relevance. And part of that is we need to do a better job of helping them understand how some things are relevant to their life outside of school. And a lot of our work is related to making school more relevant to their life. And that can be done in a variety of classes that we offer, the variety of opportunities that we present them and just providing more information to students that that may see school as not necessarily connected to their lives. We've got through the High School Success Grant interventions that we offer. And by interventions, what I mean is homework clubs, access to teachers, credit recovery opportunities. And what's been really successful as reported by students is our summer intensives program, which is a series of courses offered by teachers who have a particular area of interest to teach classes that might not necessarily be within the regular school year's course curriculum. So students can take courses that are focused on climate change, Latin American studies, Native American studies, gender and sexuality issues, contemporary gender and sexuality issues, beekeeping, courses that are super important to kids and that should and do offer credit. That's, that's going to be really important as we enter into this next year because last year's freshmen did not spend a tremendous amount of time within our school. And what we can see is when students are in our school in the ninth grade and they get the support that they need, eighty-six to eighty-nine percent in recent years, we're on track to graduation. And when we were remote, it's down to seventy-seven percent. So we're, we're doing absolutely everything that we can with what everyone has described as a very hardworking, caring and exhausted faculty to meet the needs of our students, not just in the ninth grade, but also focusing on the needs of the 10th grade. And what I would say is that this is something that this last two years is something that we are going to be dealing with for a number of years. We have students that entered into middle school that, that really did not have the opportunity to participate in grade five, students that were in seventh and eighth grade that did not have the opportunity to participate in what is considered a traditional school year. And so, you know, I don't want to focus too much on learning loss, but what I do want is for us to take stock of what kids need and make the adjustments within the system to give them something that they feel is relevant and exciting that they are invested in so that they can further their education. I am, I am happy to take questions if anybody has them at this point in time.
Other questions for either Oscar and you? Great. Laurel.
I have seen an other, I don't know if it's happening in Oregon, but I know in other states, they have career and technical high schools that just have a whole bunch of things. How do we do that? How can I support that happening? I would love to see that where we have the cosmetology, we have the auto, we have everything and that could be where you, and people come out of it almost done. Somebody told me about their son was almost done with their plumbing certificate. And they were going to be making more money than all of us probably pretty soon. So I was really impressed with that and would love to see that here. How can we do that?
Deliberately and incrementally. At some point in the very near future, I believe you're going to ask me to come back and talk about career and technical education. And the superintendent has charged me with providing you with an idea of what our plans are moving forward, both what we have right now and what we would like to see in three to five years. I think the world of our CTE programs and the state in general is really trying to connect us with industry and have job readiness certification as a part of the high school experience. Right now, each of our high schools have CTE programs and we're, we're working with those teachers to make improvements to each of those. Salem, Beaverton, Texas, South Carolina, they do have career and technical education centers for advanced studies where a student might spend part of their day in their neighborhood school and part of their day at the center or one week at their school and one week at their center. We've, we're in initial conversations about what that would mean in terms of the logistical gymnastics and the money and the programming. We do believe that that has tremendous promise for us and our students. We do believe that that has tremendous promise for us and our students and look forward to talking to you about it. I think that the home, the future build project where we're going to be building the home, we have students from multiple schools, they're going to participate in that. And that that is. An example of what we believe will best serve our students. In the future of this district. Now, the one last thing I would say is that it's not like you take math for the sake of math and then. Do construction technology, we're also actively working with teachers so that those students. Who are really interested in the trade can learn math, earn language arts credit. Through applied studies within those fields, I I know a lot of. I know a lot of contractors and carpenters that are pretty good with algebra and geometry. And I know a lot of mathematicians that can't build a box. And so. I I think we'd like to move in that direction.
Thank you, we have Gordon and Maya in the queue, Gordon.
Thank you, I I understand all the things about or can imagine all the things about COVID that made. That made everything hard for so many people and made graduation rates go down. What I'm most concerned about and and interested in. Is the difference between us and the and the average for the state as a whole. Which in some situations is really dramatic and I appreciate also all the strategies, I guess, I don't. I would like, I think I would like to hear from the superintendent about what is the theory of what we think explains this. I know for native students were thirty points below the state average now last year we were six points above and as Dr. Larrero said, sometimes maybe this is a situation where. It's a small group of students and so statistically the number can, you know, changes in a small number of people makes us makes a big difference, but. Were fifteen points below the state average for homeless students and we're a little over ten points below the state average for students with disabilities and for economically disadvantaged students. And those are not small groups of students, those are big populations of students, so I. So leaving aside the the effects of the of the pandemic and I appreciate the initiatives we have, but what is the theory of like, what do we? What does anybody think explains this that we that other places have been doing that we haven't been doing or or some other explanation?
Well, I have a number of thoughts that I would love for Oscar to perhaps compare to other districts that I. Learned and asked questions when I see their graduation rates. Many districts at ninth grade and and Andy already talked about this, but. On track for graduation at ninth grade, they spent a lot of time at. On that, on that, and so this year we decreased class sizes at ninth grade so that we could make sure that. This year's ninth graders. Unfortunately, the 10th graders that we talked about last year being behind, they'll have to, we'll have to give them increased support. But this year's ninth graders, we've tried to take a real good care of one, because it's a transition year, two. Because it we were in C D L and three, we were lucky to have S R dollars that we could put towards it. So really the transition years are 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 most important part. And before Gustavo left, he incorporated people at each building who are responsible for making sure that those ninth grade on track. Were in place. And I would say in some schools, it works better than others, you know, sometimes it's a person. Personality, sometimes it's just a change or they didn't get hired soon enough, but. I would say it's making sure that we keep track and and put it on us instead of parents or kids. But we keep track and we know exactly who needs our support. I also have sped the sped department looking at their data and comparing it with districts that have better graduation rates than we do. And unfortunately, we were going to visit one and with the COVID. The new Omicron, they postponed it till the spring, so I would love to give you that feedback once we know it, but. What Kat and team we're going to do is go visit a team that's doing it well. And we're interested in changing how we do business and modeling a district that. Is is showing the results with their kids and families, so. I think the answer Gordon could could take two hours if you wanted us to look at it. Perhaps it could be that kids don't have enough language arts and we don't. Make sure that they know all the requirements ahead of time. I do have a freshman who came home and said listed all the credits off that she needs to graduate, and so I know that. Andy's team is out there working it and trying to make sure that kids understand. But sometimes it is an understanding of what it takes and and. And making sure that kids and families know it, so. I was I and. I don't have answers for some of our dips and Oscar was digging in and trying to figure it out and. We will come back if you want us to, but that's my long, long way around giving you a. An answer that would require more than probably the hour we have left.
Okay, I mean, if when COVID allows, it's possible to visit or talk to the districts that you think. Are doing better, particularly with students with disabilities and low income students. That would be great to know without any data, just in a common sense way, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, my question, so Maya.
So I have. Four things that I want to say, two of them are kind of quick, so I'll start with those. Andy, I'm excited that you talked about the idea of incrementally building a a school or a program that is. Encompassing of all the different C T E options and I recently was on an email thread from Marge Hamilton, the recently retired. L C C president who said that she welcomes more communication and outreach and that she, you know. On a national level, the Midwest and especially the East Coast has a much greater success rate doing these kinds of programs. And seeing as she came to us from New Jersey, it feels like a great source locally to tap for that kind of envisioning process. So if you, I assume you already are in contact with her and lots of different topics, but maybe that one could be a focus. I'm also hoping to to piggyback on what Gordon was just asking about, if we could maybe get some intersectional data, I see. Some really troubling numbers for our most underrepresented or. Students who have historically been at risk of not graduating and I and I'm concerned about. When they overlap into multiple groups, so not just our native students, but our native students who are also. You know, in the category of being are in our special ed programs or or other other arenas, maybe struggling with homelessness and those are just examples. So maybe some intersectional data, because that that leaves me concerned that those numbers might be even more troubling than what we're facing to begin with. And I hope that that's not, you're, I know you're a wizard at the at the numbers game, so I hope that's not too troubling to kind of combine that data. Okay, good, and then in terms of the. The what Sydney, you were mentioning about keeping track, I love that, I remember a few years ago when my son was at North and they had this big boom in graduation rates and and. And I know I've spoken about this recently where there was such a hyper focus on relationships and 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 keeping track and and kids not getting lost in the in the masses. And North has the luxury of being a smaller school, so so I'm I'm hoping that when we are thinking about. Our numbers in terms of staffing that 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 feels like it's something that really falls on the shoulders of our of our counselors. And I know that their caseloads are so overwhelming and I'm hopeful that tracking approach also includes. Consideration for reducing their caseloads so that they can actually create those relationships. I had a kid who, okay, I'm going to probably embarrass him, but he he wouldn't have graduated it if it hadn't been for a counselor who literally held his hand to fill out his weightlifting log. Which was the last thing he needed and it didn't help that I was asking him every day, it helped that Aura Solomon at North was the one who reached out to him and made it happen. So I just want to, I want to advocate for that in our future planning. And then the last thing is probably the trickiest part and maybe the most sensitive and and I don't mean to imply. Anything about the performance of our directors at the at the levels. But I this this feels like it's really something that would fall under the purview of. The the position of assistant superintendent of instruction, which we have essentially not had anybody. Working in for this entire year and that makes me really nervous and and I appreciate that there's all this attention to the ninth grade. Level, but really graduation rates are impacted from the moment a kid enters kindergarten, so it feels really important that we. That we don't leave that position open or that we don't use. Already really overwhelmed people to fill in the the work that that position does at the forefront of our districts. Work is delivering instruction and and we've been, we've been kind of cobbled, I don't think that's the right word, I don't know, we've been. Hampered by not having somebody in that position and so I I really want us to to find a way to. To to fill that position and and to do so in an expedited way and if possible in a in a transparent way, not if possible. Ideally in a transparent way as. The hole that has been there all year has left so many questions and so many people filling in blanks. And and I think that that's not good for our staff morale, but I think it also I worry will impact not only the. Graduation rates as we move forward, but as we enter this season of planning programs for next year. It just, it feels, it it makes me nervous that 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 position is left is left open. So I I don't expect an answer to that tonight, but I would love to have that conversation as a board and and as a as a collective group. To really think deeply about how that that hole might be impacting our graduation rates.
Thanks Maya, that will be, we'll we'll bring that to leadership to and see when we get on the agenda here. Okay, Laurel.
Okay, um, my my question had to do around, so Bethel and Springfield numbers. Were were better, actually, they improved their numbers and they're close by, so it seems like we can have that connection. We don't have to go traveling far afield to have those conversations, I would like to understand more. I I think it's imperative, we start the work as much as we can on Zoom or whatever emails, having that conversation. And I would love to understand why it has to be in person work during COVID, I mean, there's so many things we've had to relearn how to do, right, because of COVID. I think it's imperative that we, if they're doing things and it's working, we get that information now and then we can fine tune it later. Is there a reason why that can't happen? I'm going off Sydney's comment, so maybe Sydney would have to answer that.
I think it was just the district offered to show the program in person, so certainly we can. Do something different. The other district.
And we have several districts to choose from.
Yeah, we were trying to find a like district, district, one that was similar to our. Our our both our numbers, so enrollment and then also what. The number of kids on I P's looks like, so. We can look to Bethel and Springfield and see how it how it works and. And bring back more information.
Be awesome. Thank you, I wanted to speak to a little, just a little bit, my daughter was one of those. Super seniors. Don't tell her I said this. But the reality is that it really was her going to do schooling on a computer. And not really, she didn't have a teacher or anything, it was just kind of a performance, she said. It was punishment for her not, she has an I P and she has difficulty, so she felt it was just punishment for not graduating on time, she didn't, she said she learned nothing. So I really would love for that to be looked at because it's not a, it's not a real thing, it's just punishment because you can do it like everybody else. And that that's unfortunate because it's already hard enough that you're not done, I think we can do it in a really more trauma informed way that really understands what it means when you're. You are different than the rest of your 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 peers, I'd love to see that and hear more about that if that's possible.
Thank you, yeah, I I'd like to learn that too, Martina.
I did see Andy had maybe a thought hand, if you wanted to respond to that, I'll I'll let you go first, Andy.
Very gracious of you, thank you. The way that I would say again, what you just said Laurel is that. High school, school in general, but high school in particular has to be relevant. It's it's gotta be something that students see as a pathway not to graduation. But to what they want to do in their life. And we've got work to do there. Absolutely, everybody that wants to go to college, our job is to prepare them to get there. But not everybody wants to and not everybody needs to, and unless we have multiple pathways, then too many students will. Go in that direction because they don't see another light to follow. You know, I I recently read a a a series of statistics that suggest that the average thirty five year old. Who has student loan debt. Ows two hundred and eighty four percent of what their initial balance was. The average African American male owes. Twelve point five percent more than what they borrowed to graduate from college, four percent after graduation. And these are just the students that graduated. So we don't want students to go to college because they don't know what else to do. We want students to go to college because that's what they want to do. And we want students to get into the trades, we want students to get entry level jobs into. Computer programming or into whatever it is that that they want and we can reasonably offer and that there's a clear. Articulated, visible, supported pathway for them. And that I said really short and Martina, I lied to you. But the key word is relevant.
You're here, all important, okay, Martina, let's try to wrap this up because we have more items sent to.
As a thirty four year old with a whole, whole lot of student loan debt, I'm fine letting you have time to talk about that. I just wanted to add one thing sort of to the that. That sort of realm of how we can make school relevant and help students who wouldn't otherwise graduate, potentially graduate. Because I was one of those kids dropping out and for me, what what kept me in and what what got me to graduate was that I was able to work full time. And that was necessary for my survival at that time and because I had a school program that. That let me take, it was called independent studies in Berkeley High, thank you very much. To all those teachers, I was able to graduate on time, did go to college, which is what I wanted. And was then the valedictorian at my college, so clearly I was someone who wanted to be able to. Do academics but would have dropped out if it hadn't been for that resource. And so I think that just the way that we we think about kids as like, there is a track of kids who want to go to college and there's a track of kids who don't. There's also a track of kids who are struggling for a whole host of other reasons and might. Think that they're in one of those camps and just by being given some support, find themselves able to be in another camp. And able to find, you know, the life that's right for them. So I I just want to add in also that the necessity for helping kids like fit, work and parenting and the other things that kids are doing at that age into their schooling. And like in the way that Echo does.
Great, I think we are moving towards having a really robust session on C T E plans, etc. And I think it would be important for the board to also hear what connected Lake County as a regional. Compact is working on and Laney S D is working on some of those ideas of high school centers for these, so. We'll maybe bring them into that conversation too, okay. Moving on to our last item for information, which is the COVID, oh, first of all, thank you, Oscar and Andy, that was great presentation. Let's move to the presentation on update on COVID superintendent.
Thank you, so I've asked Dr. Dawn Strong to start it and then we have a couple of people who may jump in. Should there be questions that, well, she could probably answer anything, but. We're going to talk about the number of cases with Omicron, what we're seeing in schools. Number of tests that we have in HR, just kidding, Dawn, and I'm just going to hand it over to you, Dawn, and. And then Brooke is also available in the wings if you need her.
All right, good evening, just want to take a few minutes, I know that you asked last time for an update on. COVID and we have had multiple changes since the end of December coming down from the CDC, of course, to Oregon Health Authority and then. To local districts, so. To local districts. So I'm going to just explain a few of those changes first. I I do want to say that somebody did mention earlier that. They have concerns. They get confused about dates when kids are supposed to be in school, out of school. And the changes, you'll understand when I explain this a little bit as to why it is confusing. And one of the things that continues to happen is we've had multiple changes between December twenty seventh and January twenty seventh. With our latest updates coming out yesterday. Well, no, the twenty seventh now. So the first one of those changes has to do just with the number of the required days for isolation and quarantine. If you remember when we first started COVID, we had a fourteen day isolation period or quarantine period for anybody. Who tested positive who was or was exposed that then went down to ten days. It is now down to five days. So anybody who tests positive has a required isolation period of minimum of five days. Same thing for students or people who are identified as close contacts. If you happen to live in the household with a positive person. You may be required to quarantine an additional five days. So that change from ten days to five days has had a huge impact on our system in that. Oftentimes families do not get and that would be employees as well. Notification that they're positive until they're right at the end of that five day isolation period. So it's really kind of creating some havoc. So people may believe that they hear that somebody is positive and yet that student or that employee is at school. And that student or employee may have been positive, but their isolation period may also be over. And so we're really seeing these things, especially with people who are are getting a PCR test because those do take some time to get back. We do work closely with the county. I am in regular conversation with both Kate Blair and Steve Adams weekly. And we also meet weekly with the other school districts in Lane County. Everybody is experiencing the same thing and it's confusing for people. So that's that's the first thing I just want you to understand and why people are saying, well, gosh, that person was positive. Why are they here? Now, one of the things that we also do, and I work with employees and our supervisors and building principals also work with employees to gather information. Then our building principals and our nurses work with our families with regards to positive students or anybody who has been a close contact. And for people who are sick, and I will tell you that with our employees right now. While the isolation period is five days, I would tell you that the majority of our employees are not able to return to work in five days. I would say most of them are returning to work around day seven or day eight. And the thing with Omicron is that we have been surging in this county. When we left for winter break, the county was experiencing, I would say. Gosh, anywhere from thirty to fifty cases a day, we might have dropped that low in the district. We were getting maybe ten reports. Of students a day, whether it be a positive or a close contact. When we came back in January, no one was prepared for Omicron at all. We came back to, we were averaging a hundred and fifty reports a day from our students. Up from about ten. So when you start thinking about a hundred and fifty reports that are submitted from our schools every day. Up to our highest point about two weeks ago, over three hundred submissions a day. So we were really getting hit hard with this. In the month of January. Just to give you a little bit of of information, in December, we had three hundred and thirty four. Reports from our families regarding students who are either positive or exposed. In January, we've had over twenty six hundred reports. So you can see what we're dealing with and our capacity to respond has been extremely limited. The county quit all contact tracing for the same reason in January, because people just can't deal with the influx of the positive cases. In the county, they had, I think their highest was over a thousand positive cases reported in one day. So everybody really is kind of in a triage mode. You know, how do we support schools? How do we support staff? How do we support students? In January, we've had over three hundred and fifty employees out either for positive cases or for people who have had exposures. I would tell you that the majority of these exposures are exposures that are outside of school. We can't tell you that that there isn't spread that does occur in schools anymore. This stuff is so highly contagious that. It would be absolutely wrong of me to tell you that we have no spread in schools. I do believe with everything that we're doing, we are still significantly limiting the spread. And we can go back and look at our data to see that this works its way through families. So if we have a positive student. It tends, we tend to see it working its way through families. A lot of times it starts with a positive adult in the family. Works its way through the family. So we continue to support those people, but. It's turning around so fast that we just aren't catching everybody because they're not giving us that information. And oftentimes it's not because they're not reporting it. They just don't have it to report. So that just kind of gives you an idea of of what we're dealing with. And and that five day quarantine and isolation period. There are new exceptions to quarantine. And children who are five to seven, who are fully vaccinated are not required to quarantine. So if they are. Exposed to somebody unidentified as a close contact, whether it be in school or out of school. If they are fully vaccinated, they're not required to quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic. That's that's been a change for us. The second change that comes is adults eighteen and over. The quarant- the quarantine requirement has changed and there's a new terminology. It's called up to date. So if I am a person who has completed my series of vaccines, either two of Moderna or Pfizer or my J and J. But I have not had a booster, I'm considered to be fully vaccinated. However, I'm not considered to be up to date. So when we have people who are exposed to a positive person, we have to find out if that exposure. If that person is up to date. If they are not up to date, meaning they haven't had their booster or they haven't had their shots in the last five months or the J and J two months. Then they are required to quarantine. And so we are seeing families who have positive household members. And we are requiring some of our staff to quarantine as well as our students. And and we're seeing that more often right now because that's in the home. The other thing is that if people have tested positive, they are not required to quarantine if they've tested positive in the last ninety days. So that's that's the third exception to quarantine. So if I've had COVID. And I'm identified as a close contact or I'm living with somebody who is positive, if I've had it in the last ninety days, I'm not required to quarantine. So those are the changes that that we're dealing with with our exceptions to quarantine. The third thing, and this is a big thing, has to do with our close contact definition changes. And in January, the Oregon Health Authority changed the close contact definition. And what it says is in the K through twelve setting. In any setting where students and staff are masked, we no longer identify people as close contacts. So regardless of the physical distancing, regardless of where they were in the school, whether it be in a classroom, in a bathroom, in a hallway. A positive student does not create close contacts. So the only time we would have close contacts would be in an unmasked eating situation. If students are together for fifteen minutes or more. So the focus will become on the lunchtime and or snack and breakfast for our students. So that's the only time that we're looking at close contacts anymore. Remember that we're not required to wear masks outdoors and they also that includes recess and. They are not deeming those to be close contact situations. So there's no close contact contact tracing that goes with anything that's outside. Then the last thing is we are still required to wear masks at all times on buses because that's a federal requirement. We don't have the authority to overrule that. So our students, whether that be through an extracurricular activity. On their way to a sporting event on their way to or from school are still required to wear masks at all times. Then just the last thing is that we have ordered. We do provide testing options for people and and we realize that we have a lot of our students who have tested opted into the testing through the U of O. And that's commonly referred to as a spit test because that's what students do and then they submit that. And we have a lot of families that participate. The advantage to that testing is it picks up a lot of our asymptomatic students. So the families will get an email saying Dawn has has tested positive. We know the submission date. Now, what I will tell you is that oftentimes we get those after the five days and that student will have been in school the whole time being asymptomatic. And so we we deal with it, but there's not a whole lot we can do with regards to that quarantine or isolation period. We also now have tests in our all of our schools and we've been Joy Maxwell, our nursing supervisor. Has made sure that we've got all of our tests ordered. So we do diagnostic testing and really what that means. Is if we have students who are sick onsite or displaying any kind of symptoms along with our staff members, we have the ability. To test people. So if a staff member comes to school and they go down to the principal and say, I'm not feeling well. We offer them a rapid test onsite before they go home. The nice thing about that is it gives us an opportunity to know if somebody is positive before they leave. We do catch positives onsite through both our students and our staff. Our students' parents have to sign a waiver and allow us to to for them to participate and what we actually ask is. Especially with our littles and elementary is that the parents come to school and administer that test under our direction. So we do have parents that opt in and participate in that as well. So those those are the things that we're doing. Those are the biggest changes that we are seeing. What I will tell you is that it has been. I I mentioned a little bit earlier and Tony Skirdup helps facilitate the meetings that we have every every Thursday with the county and with all the school districts in Lane County. And people are simply on triage. It's. We have seen that surge. Nobody was prepared for it. It's highly transmissible. We're not seeing the seriousness in terms of the the effects. Our students are recovering fairly rapidly. And our employees, we have employees who are asymptomatic up to employees who we've had a couple, not many. Not compared to what we saw with Delta, who kind of feel like they've had a really bad flu and we have several of those. But on a scale of one to ten, most people live in that middle, the four, five, six. And then we definitely have those people that are living in the the eights and nines. And I continue to work with those people and the expectation is. And what I communicate with all of them is that we don't want you back at work when you are not feeling well. You don't do anybody any good. We want you to take care of yourself. And so I just check in with them regularly and and some we we. Keep them out for for however long it takes to get them back. And the majority of those, I would say, return day seven and eight. So. I'm I'm up for questions if you guys have any.
I can also share just a couple quick things about masks. We were able to distribute. Over sixteen thousand masks to our schools. Those are the KN ninety five masks that we have. We also distributed about four thousand more to departments. So. We've been able to offer those to our staff. I have been in communication with Sabrina and they were able to survey EEA members about. Over ninety seven percent of their members wanted to be offered KN ninety five masks and about fifty seven of their members do not want to be. Mandated to wear KN ninety five mask. Our OSCA. Were communicating with them. We just haven't been able to finalize their feedback. They had recently sent a survey that didn't ask about masks and so we're obviously hesitant to send another survey out. So that is. Where we're we're at with masks and one of the things that we have. We're worked, we've received feedback about the masks that we have that. They might be a little small and a little tight around the ears. And so we are sourcing some different styles of KN ninety five masks and. Have some coming in that might fit adult faces a little bit better. And remember, these are just optional for staff to have and. If and when we cross that road, knowing a little bit more about the KN ninety fives for our adults. We will be able to offer the smaller. Based on feedback from our adults, KN ninety five masks to our students. So I wanted people to know that where we were at with that. And then another piece that was on your information sheet. Was about some of the restrictions that we have worked with our around athletics and our neighboring districts, Bethel and Springfield. We came together and collaborated with them about reduction in fans at our events. No concessions. So there has been a limited attendance at the winter sporting events. And we will be revisiting that and then probably next week with our neighboring districts. As cases are starting to come down. We're optimistic that. Towards mid February to the end of February, we might be able to allow more spectators to come in and support our winter athletic events. So that was mentioned in the information sheet. So I just want to make sure I added that too. So.
Thank you. Gordon has his hand up.
I don't know if if this is knowable. I've I've heard from. A number of people mostly at South where my daughter is that they're that they're often classes with like a third or half of the kids out. And I know that we're not doing like a lot of that is probably unknown because we're not doing all of that contact tracing, but. You know, if it were possible as a parent, I would like to know because it would, you know, it would make me guess something or maybe make some decision. So is there any way to. Track that kind of. That kind of data or let families know about that, even if though we don't know for sure that a bunch of those kids are out because of COVID.
Yeah, and I think Carrie can address the dashboard here in just a minute. I think Gordon, we, the kids that are out for COVID, we we do know. The process is is that and and we only know what families report. So. We have a system where all of our secretaries have been trained and are doing a great job, by the way. So every call that comes into a school. Is tracked and if it's COVID related, if it's a positive, it's if it's an exposure. Whatever it is, if it's COVID related, there's a form that it fills out and it goes into a spreadsheet. And that spreadsheet is monitored all day, every day. By Heather Stein, who works with me and myself and then our nurses. We do the same thing with employees. So. When the families call in, they do tell us we have a a family member who's tested positive for COVID. We've got, you know, so we can track those things. We don't share that information in anything other than when if your student, for example, is in class with a positive person. A notification will be sent out to all of the students in that classroom stating that there was a positive person in their cohort. And we used to send out maybe five, five of those notifications a day, maybe. We have been up to seventy and eighty notifications per day, which requires a whole nother person only to pull data. To send that that information out. So we wouldn't necessarily give it as you're asking, but I think Carrie Delft put up the dashboard. And one of the things I would say, we've had a lot of questions about that dashboard. Is it current? It doesn't look like you guys are monitoring that. What I can tell you again. Is in this spreadsheet and we have, like I said, one for employees and one for students. Those spreadsheets through the work with our communications department linked directly to that dashboard. So every time. I enter a positive employee, that person feeds into the dashboard, whether it be a positive employee, whether it be a person who was in quarantine. And Carrie, if you put that back up, we can just talk about it for a minute. It does identify whether it's a school source. So you can see here right now, we have a hundred and thirty eight positive students. As we speak tonight. Now that if anything comes in after about four o'clock, it wouldn't be reflected today, but this is as we as we are right now. You'll see that there are two students currently in exposure in in quarantine because of a school exposure. A hundred and seven of them, a non school exposure. And that's based on parent reporting. So if I call in and say my daughter. Is home because she's a close contact, we ask, was it somebody in the household? Was it outside of the household? Because it makes a difference about how long they quarantine. Then you'll notice that we currently have twenty three staff cases. And so every time I enter a positive. That feeds into the dashboard and what we do is we put, I will put in. So Dawn Strong is positive. Her isolation dates are. January thirty first through through February fourth, put that in. Then I also put in the date that I'm out of quarantine and based on the system that's set up, as soon as I hit Saturday two five. I drop off. So these are only here for five days. Now, they aren't always there for five days because if I find out Judy, I'm looking at you. So if I see Judy Newman has tested positive. And she tested positive three days ago, she will go into the system, but she's only going to be reflected on a staff case for two days. Because her isolation period will end. And so we don't always. So people see that and they think that we're not current. But I will tell you that this is monitored and worked on every single day. And so we really Carrie has a something down at the bottom. That that says within twenty four hours, but we do work on this throughout the day, every day. And if you go back up and look and notice that, you know, while we're doing these things, when we look at things relatively for numbers, we have. Over fifteen thousand students, about one and a half percent of our kids are in quarantine or isolation right now. So it feels huge to us. If you are working in a school and you're sitting, Gordon, like you said, in a classroom where maybe a third of the kids are gone. That does look huge. Or if you don't have your teacher or you don't have a somebody else, an educational assistant. The impacts are felt directly in our schools, but if we look at the overall percentage, it's still extremely low. Doesn't feel like it to us because as we're managing this, it is overwhelming. And it's huge, but it you'll see that relatively small percentage of our students. And and the only other thing we're dealing with is we're relying on people, our families to report this information. And so we're we're only as good as the information that is reported to us.
Thank you.
Maya. Let's see a hand.
Yeah. You're muted, Maya.
I want to say that I I recently had experience with a kiddo in in this process and system. And and before I ask my question, I just want to give a. And, and before I ask my question, I just want to give a shout out to the nurse at South, I believe her name is Allison, who, when we had a conversation was so compassionate and so warm in the conversation. It felt really, um, reassuring that I could, uh, make sure that my son was healthy and, and that those five days, there was no pressure either direction, that it was really up to the family to, to know when it was time for him to go back. So I, I, I have, um, a lot of appreciation for the nursing staff who is taking on a huge amount of this work. So just to say that out loud. Um, maybe you can help me with my question because I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around how to word it. But on that dashboard, the, um, the numbers, and I think this might be a question that answers a lot of the communities like frustration or, or confusion would probably be better word with the dashboard. The part about the, um, quarantine, because we now have this new standard for quarantine, that, that means that if a student is exposed and has no symptoms, they wouldn't automatically be put into that quarantine number, right? That would just be unvaccinated students, which might
Or vaccinated symptomatic students.
Okay, so, so that might, that might be why it feels like, um, everyone's getting an email, but that number doesn't reflect the, the, what we imagine the number should be. It's a lot lower because of the either lack of symptoms or lack of vaccination. Is that?
Yeah. And, and if you think about a positive student at, let's just say, uh, middle school or high school, um, and one positive student may have six classes and maybe there's thirty kids in every one of those classes. So if Maya's positive, we go into synergy, we put your name in and then we run a report and every student that you're in a class with gets put out into a spreadsheet. And then that spreadsheet is sent to our communications department that may send out a notice to a hundred and eighty uh, families. And so, you know, what all that means is that there was a student in a classroom that was positive or an adult that was in a classroom was positive. It doesn't necessarily mean they were a close contact. But when we're not required to do this, we're committed to doing the very best that we can. And I will tell you, as our cases have been high, it is a imperfect science. It, you know, I'm sure we've missed some along the way because we've had so many. Um, but again, one of the things we do look at is because we do have a large number of our students, um, who are vaccinated. Kids who are vaccinated and that really is elementary school on up now. Um, if they're vaccinated, they are not required to quarantine as long as they remain asymptomatic.
Okay. So that, that number, that's like the, um, school exposure quarantine that for many feels like it's on the low side. Um, that, that would mean that to be in that category, you would have to be able to trace it back to a moment of contact and, and also have symptoms and be, and or be unvaccinated. Is that, am I getting that right?
You're close. Yeah. It, so if you're, if you have a, if you have a close contact and you're unvaccinated, whether you have symptoms or not, you are required to quarantine. If you have a close contact and you're vaccinated but experiencing symptoms, you would be required to quarantine. And we don't have many of those. And remember also that the rule has changed now. We have a new, um, definition for, for, for our close contacts. So we're not identifying close contacts in schools the way we were. So before the break, if you were, um, I will, I'll say, one of our high schools had um, fifteen positive kids in one day. What we used to do is that principal, um, and administrators, if they're multiple, would have to contact trace for all fifteen of those positives. So you take fifteen kids times six classes and you're now contact tracing in ninety classrooms. That's changed because we were not seeing big spread in our schools based on all of the mitigation strategies that we had. So that was one of the changes that came out um, and that we learned about in January. And originally, um, it did not include, uh, they've changed it to be eighteen and older. That has to be up to date. Originally it was younger and they realized that wasn't going to work. So we were getting ready to send out a communication and got a second piece saying, wait, timeout, timeout, we've changed it again. So it keeps changing. We keep trying to keep people updated and making sure that, um, we are working to, to stay as close to up to date as we can. And that's where our partnership with Lane County Public Health, we have a really good relationship with, with both Kate and Steve and they're awesome to work with. And so I regularly speak with those people every week and we meet every week. And people are all experiencing the same things. It is confusing because it continues to change. So.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And, and I, I, um, I also appreciate the schools pushing out the, the U of O map. Uh, saliva test on our students, um, and encourage people to, to sign up for that. It's so much easier. My, my daughter will do that without a hasn't, any hesitation as opposed to the brain tickler that is her other option.
Right.
To be needed. So I just, um, I, I appreciate that ongoing because I, I still get emails reminding us that, that that's an option and that people should sign up. So thank you for everyone doing that.
Martina.
Um, well, I just want to, uh, uh, appreciate you both, Dawn and Brooke. And Dawn, every time you've come to speak to us over the last, like, oh my God, it's two years now. Um, like every time it blows my mind that y'all have been able to stand up the program that you have and that really, you know, I know you have a team, but there's not a lot of you. Um, so the fact that you've been able to do this, I've been able to see a little bit of how you all has, has handled this and with a team of significantly more people. Um, so I just want to express like my gratitude and how impressed I am. And I know that this is an impossible task. So thank you for continuing to do it.
Sure. We have a lot of, a lot of good people on our team. So thank you.
Yeah, Martina, I'd like to echo your words because there is a team of four. It's Dawn, Joy, Heather and Teresa. And they are amazing and they are support and they have organized a system that is really user friendly for our administrators and our nurses. And they are so our role model across the county. When, when they have their meetings with Lane County Health, Lane County Health uses, um, Dawn and her teams. Um, s- situation, how they've set it up as the role model for other districts. So they've really done a nice job in helping our smaller districts across the county too. So thank you for saying that. I was going to say it too. So.
Yeah, I, I do want to point out, yeah, yeah, I just want to say though, I, and I appreciate the recognition. We do have our nurses carry a huge responsibility along with this, as well as our building administrators. And I want to recognize that because our building administrators call every positive student's family. And that's every day. And when they get overwhelmed, we do step in and help make those calls. We do have one person who supports us as well um, that we hired specifically for this purpose. But this is, this is a huge, huge undertaking and task. Um, and our school secretaries who field all these calls, um, who have learned what questions to ask. So we don't have to keep calling. That's why Maya, hopefully you didn't get like ten phone calls of somebody trying to ask you the same questions. We've, these guys have learned so well how to ask questions and gather that information, fill out, um, the forms that really help us to be efficient with the work that we do. So it, it is, um, a good team and I'm just grateful for everybody who works with us on it. So.
I, I really hope this will be over someday and then we can capture, um, you know, the expertise and the, the program that you all have built that will be able to like really take what we've learned from this and build it out and to see that can help us, um, in future with other, uh, hopefully never a pandemic again, but other experiences. So thank you for that.
Yep, thank you.
And, and I want to also please extend our huge, uh, gratitude to your whole team. And I hope that, and, and all the administrators and school staff, because it, I mean, here's a perfect example about they have full-time jobs. And they're doing this on top of it and it's become part of it. So.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, Laurel, that should, hopefully this will be our last question, but go for it.
Well, we have, we had a letter this week from a school nurse, um, completely overwhelmed. You could it, to me, it read like they were probably crying while they were typing it. It was just there, seemed to be at a breaking point. Um, is there a way, something that we can do as an board to help relieve this? Come, I mean, I know we, as a board can say, we'd like to hire more nursing staff. Do you need that to be said? Do you, do we need to add this to agenda at some point? Because I think we have work here to do when we are, it's nice to say thank you. But it's also nice to hear. That also shows the value we have for the work that they're doing. So thank you for the work you're doing, but also I hear that our nurses are at breaking point and I want to support them.
Yeah. And I, I think, um, I would agree with that. And I think that I deal with people every day in that situation and it is a tough one. I would go back to the staffing shortages that we have, um, across the district and across our state and across our country recruiting. They are working hard to recruit nurses. It is hard. Um, this is hard work, but I know that, uh, Brooke could probably address that a little bit more, but they do work. Kat, who supervises and works with Joy Maxwell and our nurses are constantly recruiting as well. And we do look at ways to provide relief. Um, but you know, again, when we look at, um, two, three hundred and forty-four cases, you know, in December, um, that we were waiting through to twenty-six hundred reports in, uh, January. She probably wasn't the only nurse and probably wasn't the only school secretary or administrator that was, um, at their breaking point. And I think we see that and we are working hard. And I know you guys as a board um, work hard to, to do that as well. So we, we, um, are committed to communicating with our families. And I think if we were to step back and not communicate with our families, the way that we're communicating, that would certainly relieve some of the stress because they do make these phone calls, just like we all do. But, um, we have been committed to communicating and trying to provide our families with information that they wouldn't otherwise get. So it's a, it's a hard place to be.
So what I understood is that we are in the midst of looking and hiring and recruiting for more nurses.
Always.
Can we use federal COVID funds for this as well?
We have two openings right now, um, that we have gone through multiple rounds of hiring for. So we are continuing. It's a constant.
Took me two years to find a nurse for our program, just without their advertising. It's really significantly sure, there's a significant shortage.
Yeah.
I, it's may- maybe some other solutions of other kinds of healthcare providers would, could relieve. I don't know, but. Um, Laurel, did you want to say more? Your hand is still up.
No.
Maya.
I just, I, I want to encourage our superintendent. I don't think it's a board decision necessarily, but just as we extended, um, bonuses to our, our, our bus drivers to, to, to kind of fill in some gaps and appreciation and, and, and incentive for hiring, I, I encourage us to consider doing the same for our, for our nurses.
Okay. So, uh, thank you both for being here and answering the questions and, uh, really doing such a stellar job. So, thank you. And if you see any things we can do to attract more staff, definitely open for suggestions.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think now we are on to items for future action. We have two items on the agenda. Uh, the first one is to consider approval of Lane ESD. We already, is there any more to say about that one Superintendent Vanderkar? We heard it earlier.
Yeah. And Tony, Tony Superintendent's, um, let me know that before he, before he left, that if you had any questions, you could email me and I could forward them to him before the next meeting so that, um, Maya, you had a good question and it is only for the one program. So if others read through the, um, it is the, the same program essentially as last year. So, um, if you're happy with it, then great. If not, um, he's willing to answer questions that you might have. So he just said he'd, um, come, come back or send us an email if we needed him to.
Is, does anyone have any questions right now to, to share with the superintendent? And if you think of one before we vote on it, uh, at our next meeting, please email the superintendent and she'll get the answer. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on our last agenda item for fu- future action, which is consider revisions of the policies related to bias incidents and non-discrimination and consider the adoption of the policy of regu- of, um, regulation addressing racial harassment. And we have, um, Christine Nesbitt, our general counsel.
And, and we also have, uh, Larry and Miseal to join her. Um, many of us have met with a lot of people. So I wanted to make sure that if you had questions, they too could, uh, answer if, uh, you asked something that Christine wasn't part of collecting that data. So Christine, if you would like to, uh, begin.
Sure. So, um, the first two policies we're going to review are existing policies that require some revision. So Board Policy AC is our basic non-discrimination and anti-harassment policy, um, which prohibits discrimination based on race, national origin, religion, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation and pregnancy familial status and other legally protected characteristics. Legislation, uh, by the Oregon Legislature in two thousand twenty-one expanded the definition of race uh, for purposes of prohibiting racial discrimination to include physical characteristics that are historically associated with race, um, such as natural hair, hairstyle, um, and hair type. So, um, um, amendment to Board Policy AC, non-discrimination is necessary in order to reflect the expanded definition of race and to ensure that our policy accurately reflects the law um, against discriminating against individuals based on their protected physical characteristics. Um, okay, if there are no questions about Policy AC. Okay. Um, I'll cover Board Policy ACB, which is hate symbols and bias incidents. Now fourteen months ago, the board passed Policy ACB, uh, hate symbols and bias incidents. And this policy prohibits, um, hate crimes, hate symbols on district property and bias incidents, which are defined to mean a person's hostile expression of animus toward another person relating to the other person's perceived race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability or national origin for which criminal investigation is not appropriate. I know that's a mouthful, but I, I mentioned this because it is, uh, it covers a subset of, um, the protected classes that are covered in Policy AC. And that, that might be relevant to your discussion later. The reason I'm bringing this policy forward for re- proposed revision at this time is because into, um, again, the Oregon Legislature, um, changed the law, which, um, necessitates bringing this forward. Most of the changes are, um, straight out of the law. The one piece where, and we, we talked about this a little bit last time, the Oregon Legislature narrowed the definition of symbol of hate as compared to the former ODE definition and the definition that had previously been adopted by the four J Board of Directors. The superintendent is proposing a revised definition of hate symbol so that it meets the requirements of state statute, but also doesn't lose any coverage that we, um, the, the board previously had identified as, as important. Um, if there are any questions about this policy, I'd be happy to answer them at this point. Okay. And I want to note, um, for, for you all, as well as for the listening audience, that there is a fairly detailed administrative regulation that accompanies this policy that is currently, um, posted on our website and also, um, undergoing revision as directed by the superintendent. So some revisions are in the works. Some of the comments that we received, um, via, that, that I saw rather late today would have some bearing on that administrative regulation rather than the board policy itself. So some of the procedural pieces. Okay. So let's turn to, um, proposed adoption of new policy. Oh.
I'm just wondering if you could give an example of what that is. I, I appreciate hearing that there's a distinction, but, um, maybe also for the listening public so that they can understand where the, their concern falls under AR versus, um, policy.
Absolutely. Yeah. So one of the pieces of feedback would be, was, um, to, to look at expanding the reporting a little bit more. And, um, the reporting pieces about like, how do students make reports or how do staff make reports? That could be expanded in our administrative, um, regulation because our administrative regulation addresses that level of detail. Our Board Policy ACB doesn't. Our Board Policy ACB just says, this is what we want. This is what is prohibited. Superintendent, go create a regulation that implements all of that. So the implementing reg covers detailed things about reporting complaints, detailed response procedure. Um, another example is the, um, that is under consideration with the superintendent is incorporating the, um, reference to the bias incident response team into that regulation. So that I, I had previously shared that with the board just as an informational point, but that would be an example of something that's very, very administrative in nature, um, that typically would not belong in a board policy. That typically would not belong in a board policy. Thanks. Thank you for the questions. So move moving on. New Board Proposed Board Policy A C C. So as as you're aware, a number of policies do address discrimination and harassment. Based on rate race. I've talked about two of them already just now. And then there's a third one, J F C F. Harassment intimidation and bullying. That no, however, no district policy is devoted exclusively to the subject. Of combating racial harassment. So that is what this policy would be addressed to. At the at the last board meeting, the board and. And members of the public commented on a proposed draft. And also both both before and following that meeting, staff reached out to four J, a number of four J employees. And community members for additional input. And those pieces of input that were were received in a timely fashion were were all. Able to be addressed in some fashion in the in the proposed policy presented to you tonight. And I do want to cover some of those areas that we changed in response to public comment and. And community engagement as I go through this. So but first and foremost, the policy, you know, you you start ideally, it start a. Policy with its purpose and scope and, you know, the policy at right at the outset just acknowledges the the. The harm of all forms of racially oppressing conduct of racially oppressing conduct and that. It's critical for educational institutions to to have that central role in recognizing and interrupting these demonstrations. Of of personal re- personal prejudice and in teaching inclusion. And and part of that, I think, is really important. It's intended to to ground us, the board, and this is in response to your comments. Ground us in an educational framework and in a transformational framework. The scope of the policy applies to all district programs and activities in the district. One of the comments that we received on the scope was the need to highlight its applicability in athletic events. I'm sure you've seen statewide. Some of the issues that have cropped up and and so that has been done. That feedback was incorporated. Another comment raised was by a board member who asked about its application to off campus conduct. And this is a tricky one because there. There are legal limits really truly to regulating most off campus misconduct. It's generally seen as a parent's concern. However, there are some exceptions. And this proposed policy does reach those. It it would prohibit those two. Racially harassing conduct to the extent that we are legally allowed to do so, meaning. To the extent that it either creates a substantial disruption in the school environment. Or it targets a particular individual. And is so serious or severe as to deny or limit their ability to participate in or benefit from the educational program. So it's a little bit narrower of an application off campus necessarily because of of First Amendment limitations. Um, the policy also defines and and certainly that's a that's a it's a policy option for the board to not. Extend it in that fashion either. But based on the comment, I assumed that that you would want to. So. It defines racially harassing conduct as unwelcome verbal, physical, non verbal conduct. Based on a person's actual or perceived race, color, national origin or ethnicity. Or physical characteristics historically associated with race, a place of origin, protected class ethnicity. Or religious or cultural ancestry too. The one of the pieces of conduct that or excuse me, feedback that we received very early in this process was the need. And how important it was for the definition to not to not. Require that harm be inflicted or require a malintent. Something that is done with a hateful intent. And and quite frankly, the hateful intent piece is really already covered by Policy A C B. So. And and that feedback was incorporated. This policy defines racially harassing conduct in a manner that. Is broad enough so that it does not depend on a person's intent to cause harm. Or the causing of tangible harm or detriment to another person. Another central component of this, and I think it's very much related to how broad the policy is. Is that this is not a zero tolerance policy. The emphasis is on the education of persons who. Violate the policy, not shaming, not discipline. That said, the policy, of course. Can cover a very wide range of possible activities. And so it does need to be elastic enough to accommodate. Responses to a range of circumstances. So I think we I think we hit the mark on that, though. The we we receive feedback that it would be important to include examples of conduct prohibited by the policy. And again, the issue of athletics. Came up, which was incorporated. I've previously talked about, you know, it establishes basic expectations. Students, you have to follow the policy. Staff, you've got to follow the policy. Staff, you are absolutely required to report up the chain because that is our that is how we resolve these issues. Building admin, you are responsible for implementing this at the building level. We received comments about the reporting piece and had quite a bit of conversation about this, that people wanted that. Supportive access to reporting options. And so that has been incorporated. Students and families are encouraged to report concerns to a trusted employee, any trusted employee, and the employee then reports it up. To the admin so that action can be taken. There's also, and and we have had this for a while, there's an optional student safety reporting form. Then there is also a texting option through Safe Oregon, and this is something that we advertise in our schools already. And it results in a pretty timely report to admin to the school administration, excuse me, I'm tripping on my word. To the school administration. And so in that way, it's a really great option. And the phone number is literally included in the board policy. Which is rather unusual, I have to say. It's that's a very procedural thing to to do, but there you have it. We're we're breaking, we're breaking out here. Okay, so the other piece is that there are, it describes all the steps that we take in response to a report. In including centrally, centering on the impacted person's experience, their safety, healing. And. Access to education, both in terms of setting up interim measures and in considerations throughout the process. Of course, there's a requirement about a sensitive and thorough investigation. We received a couple of comments about timelines. And we incorporated that in where the expectation for administrators, and this is in. On the second page of the policy at paragraph five, I think. There's an, they have to update impacted persons if the investigation isn't completed within ten working days. So. That that was the. Hopefully will provide some flexibility and communication at the same time. And then finally, you know, we worked, we worked a lot on language that would promote the the idea. That what we are really aiming for by mostly is an educational response and one that. Does not alienate people from their community, but that teaches understanding and respect. For others that prioritizes practices that that repair the offender's connection to the community. With the hope that that person will become an ally at some point. And that promotes growth and transformation of the individual who caused harm. We received a comment also about the need to guard against mandating restorative. Conferences and could not agree more and have built in language to be very clear that, you know, we don't, we're not. Mandating. A a conference in which a victim and an offender must meet together. Says that would be inappropriate and would would go against what we already teach, but we put it in the policy. And then it it also requires an investigation of and implementation of measures that are necessary to address. Climate issues in the school community. So I've kind of, I've I've covered a whole lot here and. Will open it up for questions. Or discussion. Gordon.
Okay. Among other things, I mean, one thing that strikes me is that both for students and staff. It's important for people to be able to report something in a way that. That they don't worry about any kind of blowback, that there's some kind of ombuds person. So I so I wasn't sure when you said staff have to report up the chain, if that means. If a staff person has a concern that could be about a superior. Or even about somebody in the school who's another staff person, but who they they are. Don't feel comfortable reporting to their superior. It seems to me there's got to be some kind of ombuds person or some other channel. So. I don't know if I heard that wrong or or what you're thinking about that.
No, typically, when when I say report up the chain, I I'm talking about when. When another staff member other than the person in that chain has violated. Violated the policy. It's really about if the if there's something happening in a classroom that has to, we have to notify the administrator. The really only the administrator can. Command the investigation and resources necessary to to fully address an issue of racial harassment. And at the school site. So that's how that works. There are typically alternative ways of reporting and including, and I believe there are so in this policy as where. As well, like no person is going to be required to report to a person who has. Is alleged to have violated the policy.
Yeah, I I guess I still think if we're talking about, I mean, just in any workplace, people always worry about. You know, who's on the ends, who's on the outs, am I going to be considered a troublemaker, all that kind of thing. And I think that for staff, it would be good to have some avenue. Other than their building administration as a as a second possibility in addition to.
Yeah, and and so if you look that the middle of page two is where. We've attempted to address this. So any report alleging a violation of the policy by a person to whom the report would normally be made. Or ordinarily be made shall instead be made or filed with the district's Title Six or. Nine, that should be a nine coordinator for students or to the Human Resources Director for employees or to the superintendent. And then reports against the superintendent are to be made to the board chair. So. Oh, Martina.
Um, so I I I anticipate other folks will bring this up, but I I'd like to talk about the. The sort of zero tolerance approach to the use of the N word and whether or not that's something that we can adjust. But I also just wanted to jump in quickly because I I heard a couple of comments. Both in the emails that we received and then in some of the comments today, you know, sort of talking about like the the response. To hate and bias specifically to the incidents that have occurred at North. And I just want to reiterate that. Like I think that this is a policy that would be really helpful to have online for that. And also, you know, in my in my day job, I have. At times worked with survivors to support them in removing images that have been posted online of them. So that's image facilitated sexual abuse and removing things from the internet is incredibly hard and opaque. And this is a place where like the law is way behind the technology. And so, you know, I can, I can understand how frustrating that is. I I, you know, I sit with survivors who are struggling with that. And I also just want to say that like the fact that you've been calling Instagram's office every Monday is entirely unsurprising to me. And and truly a place where legislation needs to be written to address these issues of the ways that the internet can facilitate abuse. And I would really hope that that would be something that would be taken up on a federal level. But, you know, if if not on the federal level, then Oregon could potentially follow in the footsteps of California and create laws prohibiting. Image facilitated sexual abuse and other harassment. So I know that's not anything we can do here, but I wanted to voice that. And then. Let's get back to talking about the zero tolerance approach to the N word.
I I wouldn't call it zero tolerance in the sense that. Well, for two reasons. Number one, the the policy is focused on education, but not but the other component is. The by definition racially harassing conduct must be unwelcome conduct. And the other piece that I have heard and and it came, I received it kind of late today was a concern. Does will this lead to censorship? Will this lead to, you know, constraining teachers from teaching? And. It we did think about that and with the idea of no, we definitely don't want to preclude materials that are, you know. Meet state standards or that are supportive of promoting this policy. And that's that is in footnote one of the policy. So I feel like we've covered that issue. That may not respond. I think the issue of. Students using the N word with each other in ways that they perceive as welcome. Is a really tricky and loaded one. And so. I, yeah.
So one of the things that we went back and forth on is. To African American students using that as a sort of a term of endearment. What about the African American student that is offended? That's present. So there's another student that's present. And reports. What then? And and so you you have to recognize where we're at. It won't be something once they leave our hallways. They could use in the workplace. We're in a bit of a position to to look at. How people will receive it that aren't in the inner circle. And they can be offended. And what do you do with that? And so if our policy is not. Firm in some way, and I think Christine mentioned it, you know, our 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 goal is to educate, you know, I think. You know, some students may use it and it's not intentionally used to be derogatory towards someone. But they do have the responsibility of who else is present. And I think, you know, we received reports of students that have been offended that are African American. That don't appreciate it. And so we have both pieces here and and I'm I'm assuming we'll look at your guys' guidance. On. You know, where do you stand with that and how do you plan? I think it's one thing for us to develop policy, yours is to. To sign off on policy.
Thank you. That that was a really helpful explanation. I might encourage, I think this footnote is really helpful. And I think Larry, that explanation was really helpful. And obviously, an incredibly challenging situation to navigate. And so I'm sympathetic to that. I might encourage that in the A R that results from this. That there be a really clear, like maybe not a footnote, which would make more sense in an A R, a really clear articulation that that does not prohibit. The use of, you know, educational materials that may include that word. You know, there was some some controversy a little while ago about, you know, some teachers who wanted to use the music of Kendrick Lamar as a teaching. Tool, brilliant and amazing lyrics also can be really challenging for some folks. And contain a lot of language that some folks are uncomfortable with. And that's going to be something that is a totally complex thing to navigate, but making sure that. Educators don't feel like this is the policy that's prohibiting that. It's probably going to be useful. So it's a tough one to navigate and I I don't envy you writing that A R. Thank you.
Maya.
I I want to. I want to first thank Laurel for coming to our last meeting and joining in on the conversation. I think that that really is. Helpful to have your voice included and and it felt. It it was a welcome addition to to not be the only board member being part of that that group. I also. I really appreciate that group and I want the the listening audience to to understand that there's this really precarious balance between really wanting to to move forward quickly so that we can look as responsive as possible to to some really like very pointed crisis moments that have happened recently. But also wanting to be really careful about what we put out, knowing that it can be changed, but knowing also that 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 if possible, putting out our best work is is the optimal starting point. So it's it's just a balance. And I want the community who is very eager to see something happen like yesterday. Understand that yesterday stuff has been happening and it's happening today and tomorrow as well, and that and that the work is ongoing and committed and and very the the folks involved are very passionate about it. I did the the N word conversation had me stop and think about some of the folks that that I would like to hear from directly and maybe incorporate into this small group that has been meeting regularly and who I hope we can set up another meeting for soon. And that is our students. I I talked with one student from North Eugene who has been involved in the VSU for years. So she's she's been involved since before it became a huge group this year and and has a historical perspective, which I really appreciated. And and her number one thing is can we be more involved? And and that, when I think back on the the equity lens is who's missing. And while the conversations are being extended to to and and folks are being kind of recruited to bring in their voices. This is a voice of someone who despite being invited into the conversation, still feels like there's more room for direct input. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can schedule those meetings for after the school day is over. So maybe we can incorporate a student voice or two. I'm also really appreciative, Christine, every time you report and every time I go to one of these meetings, I see the input folded into the policy and and the shifts that happen and and even just the use of oh, gosh, I forget what you talked, what word it is, that brilliant word that Michelle Schu suggested for repairing, repairing relationships. Is that right? Yeah. And and I and I recognize, I really appreciate it. And and I'm wondering if the the community is so invested in this and is giving so much input. And I'm hoping I I saw that a number of the emails did include Superintendent Vanderkar's email on it, but a number of them are just board emails. And I'm hoping that we can forward those to you and to Larry and Nissail as well. So that even if it's repeated, we see how much enthusiasm there is for some areas of this of this policy to be looked at. I am hoping that we can continue that conversation about the the N word and how that folds into the policy. I think that Martina raises some important points, and I think that's where the student voice would be really, really helpful in driving that. And then the last thing thinking about, and I love that word ombudsman, but I also stumble over it. But to me, what it means is like an external person who is able to be seen as neutral. And I'm wondering if the the space for that might less be in the reporting arena and maybe perhaps in including folks who are not district associated people in the response team that Larry and Nissail have put together. And and I just wanted to to say that before I forgot it. So I I hope we can set another meeting up shortly. I think that the meetings have been really productive and I I really enjoy as a board member or appreciate is probably a better word, seeing the steps as they happen. And and seeing again that the incorporation of the input has been really reassuring to me.
Laurel. Oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I had a few things. I appreciate the work that that this is happening. I think we still have a ways to go. But we're getting there. I, some of the things that I would love to see are when I'll just continue the conversation about language and how important it is that we include student voice in this conversation around this because it's it's and you know, African American vernacular language is a language and and it's and because that is not completely understood by this board doesn't mean it is shouldn't be seen as something valuable. It's respecting culture and a whole bunch of things that go on along with that. And when we make a decision to single out something like that, you know, can't have that. And I know you talked to to this a bit, Christine, but I really, it would encourage to change the 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 focus, not from we're singling out this word because there, then it allows for there to be a whole range of things that happen. Well, I decided as this teacher that I was offended by it. And so it can't happen. And that understanding at that point, what it, how they were using it with a friend or such. That can happen. And so if we have a a that tolerance thing is if we leave it subjective to who, however, whoever's deciding this, then it's a, it gets a little bit. We don't have a greatest history with our Black, Brown and Indigenous students. And those decisions coming out in their favor. We just do not. So we need to be aware of that and acknowledge that when we're making these decisions. So if we take the focus to using language just in any way that's derogatory and and meant to cause, you know, offense in that. I'm not looking, there's at that one spot, but you guys wrote about it well, but I just wanted that one part to be taken out because you were talking about how do we use the language in a way that's offensive, racially offensive. And that was a great, but I don't think we need to single out that one word. Because there are a lot of words that are offensive. And racially charged. And people have ways to get around it. Did you, Christine, you were gonna say something to that?
I actually am just seeking clarification. So the place where the use of racial slurs or epithets such as the N word regardless of intent, that is in the examples section. Is that what you're referring to? Your, are you asking that racial slurs be?
That definitions, expectations and consequences. It doesn't say an example, but says example.
Look at, look at the third paragraph there.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. Yes. So if it's in a policy, then it is, it's part of our policy. I want us to be really writing something with the intent that we want it to have. I also had another, a different part where I would like to see how racial harassment can be happening in the school to our our students or to staff by other people that work there or and I want, I would love to see how we are, do we collect that data? Do we know how many kids are stopped and their backpacks are just searched? And do we know the demographics when that happens? Is that being collected? So we have that. And, you know, like every time an officer does that, that has to be reported. Are we reporting that every time? I know we had talked about it another time that there were some report things that were going to be started soon. But is that part of that? Or is that a different thing?
We had not seen that as part of this policy. So and I Superintendent Vanderkar, sorry, I jumped the queue here.
No. Well, yeah, I don't think it's part of this this policy, but Larry and Nissail are working on ways that we can keep track, much like the COVID dashboard. And I don't know if that specific example was in in the on the list that I saw, so I would have to look back. But Nissail or Larry, do you know if it if it was on the list or because we were talking about discipline. I don't know that we have search on there.
We we don't have that specific example, but I could be misspeaking. So I, we'll take a look.
Okay.
I I would like to see a conversation about adding staff accountability to racial harassment policy because it gives it more weight and it gives it more, and it's a board policy. So it says, we expect that we're going to be looking at this and being aware of it. And and it's important to us as a board that we know what these numbers are and where they're at. And it's not like an assignment just that may or may not happen that could fall off. But if it's part of policy, it's it's pretty important. Thank you.
So Laurel, would you put that under district responsibilities? Or do you want a board? An additional bold that says the board will look at data, something like that. So on page three, it says district responsibilities. And then it says what the district will do. Do you want us to add something in bold that says the board will and then look at data and update the policy if needed? Or I'm I'm trying to figure out what wording you want there.
I'm not sure if we should just go there, but it should have its own little space to it. I was, I'm more than happy for it to go back to the group for everybody to have a discussion about this. I just, I I do see where it would work under district responsibilities, but I also there's maybe more things that I'm not thinking of at the top of my head. So I'd love for it to go back to the committee who's working on the board policy right now.
Great. This Christine. I just, I I want to make make sure. So the the, it says that the district will make conduct an annual review of racial harassment violations and make recommendations for improvement.
I see that as kind of like the baseline. I'm asking that we as a board know, we should be able to know if we are, who we're stopping and who we are looking at more in our districts. Right? We should be able to know those demographics. And I I know it's it's not always comfortable to look at that, but we can't, we can't get to change without really knowing what's happening. So it would be great to have those numbers. And then I am sure Nissail and Larry have a wealth of knowledge about what we can do with that data and how we can use it and how they can be, the board can use it to help inform in the future.
Good. Thank, did you get what you needed to try to incorporate something, Christine? Yes, I I I think I'm 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 wondering, I'm just thinking about, does it go in this policy? Does it go in our policy on cooperation with law enforcement? Does it go in a search and seizure policy? These are just things that are running through my mind.
Well, I think it's important to this policy because what we're saying is we are aware at certain levels, this can be seen as a form of harassment. And we want to be aware that and by doing, by collecting that data, we are aware, correct? And then we can help mitigate if there is a problem or if there's not a problem, we can rejoice and share that information.
I'm going to just ask, I hope this is a simple question and it really is a wondering because I'm listening. I read all the emails about and I I'm having a deeper understanding about why people have feeling, you know, maybe the N word should not be included. And I know the group is going to talk about that. But I was curious, my question was this is the one place that you qualified it with words that said regardless of intent. And I just was curious about that, given what the, what you were, how this policy was introduced.
Sure. I mean, it's any racial slur regardless of intent, not not just the N word. But I I think that the the refrain that is often said was, well, I didn't mean to hurt, you know, I didn't mean to hurt. I didn't mean to offend. I didn't do this. It's an excuse. And this is just to emphasize like racial slurs are not okay. It doesn't matter what your intention is. If your intent may be to be funny, it may be to be welcoming to another person. It may be anything else, but it's it's not okay on school property. That doesn't mean you can't say it when you're at a party or among your friends away from school, but on school property. And and you know, this is it, this is a tough issue. And I also think it's a board policy issue that the board is going to have to decide in a couple of weeks. Meaning I don't think it's, I mean, staff has made its recommendation on this policy and I we can have more discussion about whether we'll want to change that recommendation in in light of this conversation. But I mean, this is just something that the board may need to do rather than, and and it's not kind of a popular vote issue in my mind. This is a board policy and is, you know, central to what the board decides. So you certainly have a policy option to remove that language. Thank you. I just, I, yeah, I just want to understand. Are there any other questions for this group or Christine or Miss Syl or Larry?
Well, I I just want to echo one more time that you know, our goal is to protect all students and students that hear derogatory terms can be offended. And if they're part of that cultural group, it may not make it any less offensive. And and so what we do with that afterwards is the question. And yeah, and and so I'm just thinking about my own kids and my expectation for how they speak and what they say in public and what they might say when they're just with their friends are, you know, two different things. And it's a lesson that I think kids need to learn. Plenty of people that are removed from their profession based on not being able to manage their tongue. And we can turn out straight A students, but if we put them out into the world with loose lips and and razor like tongues, they won't make it very far. And this is a very fine line. And and I mean, yeah, I have plenty of friends that that I hang out with and and I guarantee you, I don't come to work and speak the same way that I do when I'm with them. And and that's something that is learned. And and we're in the business of education.
Thank you for those comments. I have Christine and then Laurel. I think the other element that bears consideration as you think about this issue is is the potential liability for the district. I'm 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 not fear mongering here, but I will say that there are a number of cases that deal with the N word in school settings. It's not something that it it's something that that has to be addressed. And the issue around normalizing that in a school environment can create liability. So I put that out there as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I did, when I found out about the Junction City policy, it was actually students and complaints about the N word that triggered the whole process with students to develop the policy that Junction City did, the first policy on it. So I do know that. And that was all around that. So. Laurel.
Um, I would just I would just say, I think we're agreeing on all this. My my intent when I was talking about this, and I don't want to put words with how anybody else was talking about this, is it's an opportunity for education, not to be, and so having that kind of the the language around the zero, zero tolerance kind of allows for that to be taken to a higher level by some people as we know happens, as we know happen sometimes in the educational setting. So really, it's important that perhaps we we send this out to people that do look at language, who do look at, because we are, what I'm hearing is a very white lens on language right here. And the reality is that, you know, people And the reality is that, you know, people speak in many different ways and we have to be really careful about how we talk about it. And it doesn't mean we're wrong that we, yeah, you can't, I tell my own kids the same thing. You don't, I'm not going to protect you if you go to school and you use the words you just tried to use with your brother. That's, you know, better than that. It's our job as parents to do that, but also we're as adults, we have the education to know this. But as educators, it's our job to teach and talk about this. And so we can't change everything about people, but you will get a lot more from a kid instead of shaking a finger and saying no, but by talking about the damage that it's done and then doing the transform, transformative, um, work around it. So it's, I think we're talking about the same thing. I'm just worried about the language because we don't, even if we all in this, I was going to say room, zoom, are thinking the same level of response to it. I guarantee you, there are people out there that haven't had the training who are not going to do the same level of response. And we see that, we've seen it in the district. So that's why it's important for the policy to be written in really accurately. And I, there are people that can help with this as well. And I, I get what you're saying about liability and we do have to have something, but it's about words that are said to hurt and shame across, like you said yourself, Christine. It's not just that word. It's all words that behave like that. And we have the ability to talk about it with our students. So.
Any other comments or questions? Great. Thank you for all the effort you have put in on this policy and working with a group, community group and with board members. I appreciate that. And I see Alicia now as her hand up.
Thanks. Sorry, I didn't get it up quicker. Um, uh, thank you too. And thanks for letting us know about how the community has, has been involved. And I want to thank everybody that emailed us on this question. It did, uh, cause pause. And Laurel, I think, makes a very good point about if we move forward with it, how do we provide clarity? Because this is a little different, uh, situation. And how do we provide clarity that, that, um, I don't know if I'd say levels of intervention, just different interventions. So I look forward to the group, um, grappling with this, uh, with this question. I, uh, I, I'm not skilled enough and I am not, um, in community in depth enough, uh, to get the nuances that people are talking about. But I do respect the people that are working on this and, uh, I thank you. And I, I really want to keep that in mind because it, it is different. It's, it, you know, I appreciate Larry, what you're saying about words we use and don't use. And I have fond memories of that with my son. And it's different for different communities. So how do we, how do we address that? Gosh, I wish I had the answer at, uh, whatever, almost 11 o'clock at night. But, but I don't, but I trust the group to, uh, to have the conversation. So thank you. And I look forward to hearing what, what you as a group come up with to kind of, uh, talk about some of the issues that we've, or, you know, mitigate or fix. Let's just use small words, fix some of the issues that we've come up with. Thank you.
Okay. I think we really are done. I think Alicia had the last word. So thank you and thank you for staying to be the last agenda item. We have one last thing on the agenda and that is items to, um, for, to bring back to the board. And before, I'm going to put down tonight, several things came up. I'll tell you what's on my list. We're going to be bringing the working agreements up for a vote. We are going to maybe have a discussion at least at leadership and have, bring it to the board about the order of our agendas. Uh, we are going to talk about seeing the membership for the Equity Committee. Um, and I know in the future, we want to be sure it's on the calendar for the career technical education presentation and board training and support plans. That's what I have on my list. So Laurel has her hand up.
You have on your list, the, um, the thing Sydney mentioned in the work session about, um, who would facilitate the Equity Committee? I would, I'd like that to come to, um, I would like to make sure board and staff to have a discussion about that.
I'll add it to the Equity Committee item.
And I'm wondering too, if, you know, we as the, uh, Maya and I are board reps for the Equity Committee, if that's the appropriate place for it.
Can we talk about it in leadership and then get back to the group with that? Sure. Okay. Maya.
Um, forgive me if this was part of your list. I was trying to listen carefully. Will, will we have a chance or will, can, can I, can I suggest that we have, um, some information shared with us about the process of the, of filling the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction position and, and possibly a conversation about making that, um, a transparent and, 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 and perhaps board involved process if appropriate?
We will ask the superintendent to talk with us about that. That's great. I put that down. Thank you. Okay. Laurel, your hands up.
I, I would love to understand more about the expulsion process and how we do it. And, um, so we can understand, um, if there's room for change or I, I would just like to understand more about it since, um, we participate at some points, not, not many points, but some points.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I wrote that down and we will look at, at that. That's, yeah, great. Anything else? We might get to adjourn before 11:00 then. I don't hear any other comments. And so I'm going to adjourn the school board meeting on this February 2nd school board meeting. Thank you, everyone.